This conference will now be recorded.
All right, notice is hereby given that the La Gavista City Council is holding a regular meeting on Thursday, October 1st, 2020 at 6:05 PM as prescribed by VTC government code section 551.041 to consider the following agenda items. Sandra, we have everybody except for Arch and I will update you if he is in the other meeting. We have made contact with him, so he should be around. Executive session. Number one, convene into a closed executive session pursuant to section 551.071, advice of council, 551.072, real property, 551.074, personnel, section 551.087, economic development, Texas government code, and section 1.05, Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct regarding a consultation with legal counsel and possible action concerning any regular meeting agenda item requiring confidential attorney-client advice necessitated by the deliberation of discussion of said item as needed. And I know right off the top of my head, we will be discussing agenda item number six. Otherwise, that's all I know, so we may not be in there very long. We will convene into executive session at 6:06 PM. We'll see when we get back. All right.
It's just us, but we do know we are being recorded at this time. So, hi, everybody.
Howdy. How you doing?
Hi, Robert. Hi, Diane. Darcy. Laura, I've seen you before.
Hey, Rob.
Laura, you're the annexation Keith Walters.
Right.
All right, now that they're all gone, I'm gonna go get.
Oh, I like that you only wore no pants there, Paul.
You like that? I'll get shorts on, but.
But at least you're half presentable.
I did the same thing for court earlier today.
Oh, let's see, someone's asking a question. Meredith. Oh, good evening, everyone. Okay. Meredith says, "Good evening." I'll be the. Good evening.
I'll be the presenter. You're now in Darcy's court. Beware.
Darcy, I'm eating pizza right now, so I figured you all didn't need to listen to that.
Oh, well, soon here I'll be mixing my first drinks since I am home and a civilian.
Hey, Diane, did Deanna tell you that we're headed to Rockport tomorrow?
She told me several weeks ago, remember I was in your office when she said, "I am gonna make that reservation?"
Cool. Yeah, we're heading up.
But it's been a few, it's been a couple of weeks. So, you'll be gone this weekend?
Yeah, we'll be back on Sunday. Ready to do some fishing?
I'll keep my ear peeled if I hear anything unusual happening over there.
I see it, Robert. Behind you, you're sailfish.
Oh, yeah. Yep, I caught that when I was like, I don't know, five or six. I hooked it and hung on for a while, and my dad helped me bring it in.
Diane, were you much of a fisherman over in Houston?
We did fish, yeah. Mostly bay fishing. We didn't do any, any bay and lake fishing, though. We didn't do any open water golf fishing.
Yeah, same with me.
Mostly because we didn't wanna put our boat out there in the saltwater that much.
I understand.
I had a client, we used to go out, out fish around the rigs a little bit. That sailfish was caught in Florida, off of Rivera Beach in Florida. And so, it's kind of what I'm used to, but I've been out and caught kingfish and cobia and snapper off of Galveston. That was a lot of fun, too.
Cool.
As long as you're catching something, it's fun.
Right?
Exactly. That's how I feel. If you're catching, it's fun. If you're sitting there just throwing out your line, it kind of gets old. When you don't drink beer. I think if you drink beer, then it makes it a little better, but I'm not, I'm not a fool.
Since I started on fresh otter, we used to call that drowning worm.
Hmm. Well, when I grew up in Missouri, we went fishing in the river, but it was, it was more of a necessity than for fun. It was part of our food.
What part of Missouri?
But the river trout, river trout is really good. Look at me, I'm fixing my hair in my mirror here. Now, and.
What part of Missouri, Diane?
Southern Missouri and the Ozarks. I'm, I'm from a little town really close to Arkansas, like smack dab in the middle of Missouri.
Like right on Lake Bull Shoals? Oh, okay.
Bulls? No, not really. Uh-uh.
Nope. We have a little piece of property up in Theodosia Hills and right on Lake Bull Shoals.
Bull Shoals is gonna be either to the boot, toward, toward the Boot Hill or toward Lake of the Ozarks area, isn't it?
It's pretty much in the middle, I thought.
Maybe it's further north.
Well, it's on the border with Arkansas. It's got across the river here, Arkansas.
I wasn't well-traveled back in those days. We had very little money, so it wasn't, my high school trip was to Lake of the Ozarks. That's when, that's the one time I got to go to Lake of the Ozarks. But it's a known, it's a known lake. I know the name, but I just can't place it in. I have to Google a map here real quick.
Yeah, it's a big, it's a, it's a big dammed-up river lake, just kind of like Lake Travis. That's the countryside, has taller trees, but other than that, looks a lot like this area.
Who's talking? Robert, Robert Durin?
Speak up, Rob, and tell her who's talking.
Thank you, Sean.
Oh, I figured everybody could see me.
Yeah, yeah, you were kind of two-thirds out of the picture.
All right.
I actually really like these because I don't have to, you know, go a half a block to City Hall. I hope they keep having them like this, plus the live meeting once COVID is over. I like.
I was going to those ones in the City Hall for a good, I don't know, maybe 10 to 12 months before COVID hit.
Right.
Sitting in those chairs in there like that for so long.
Well, and half the time, there's not enough seats for everybody, so you have to stand, and you can only stand in certain places. And so, like you, Darcy, I kind of hope they keep the live meeting once they go back to those, plus this online option. I think it would be a great idea.
Yeah, the dual option would be really nice. I think we kind of, when everybody started going, when Paul and I started attending regularly, that was, that was like the beginning of the heyday of going to the meetings. I think we were, we were setting records as to the numbers that were attending the meetings. So, I think up till that moment, they didn't really need that many chairs, but then, then they did.
Yeah.
Depends on what's going on. They've had so many, they had to go to the K Elks a few times.
Right.
When there's a, when there's a real rebellion.
Well, you know what, what happens is you could look at their chairs, and they're all nice and comfy and high-backed with arms on them, or sitting in those like. I have really bad back issues, so, you know, I was even bringing a little footstool to put my feet up on, so I wouldn't have that dangling effect. But this, this is much better, because now I could be antsy-pancy and move around and turn my camera off and lay on my couch and still listen, so. I mean, except I do miss everybody.
Well, for me, I like this venue because I think it affords more citizens of La Gavista the opportunity to engage with their city government. And anything pursuant to more engagement with the citizenry, I think provides for better, a better product that comes out of the city council. So, I hope that just continues.
Yep.
I agree.
Since they record the, the public ones anyway, it would seem to me it wouldn't be that much of a, that much of an add-on burden to just, to continue the Zoom aspect of it. I think that is.
I think it's a, I think it's a state law, Texas Open Meetings Act. I, while this is, while meetings by electronic means such as this are allowed, I think that they are only allowed, I would need to go back and check, but I believe that they're only allowed in lieu of inaccessibility to the, the more traditional venue. Does that sound right, Robert?
I believe that's right. I believe that's, that's.
Well, I did think.
But they could.
I saw something on the bottom. On the bottom of the page here for the, the agenda meeting, it does say something about the regu, this regular meeting will be conducted utilizing a video conferencing tool, and city council members, staff, and citizens will participate via audio only. But that's not the case. So, I'm wondering, I never noticed it before, but I just noticed it today because I was printing out the whole agenda, I mean, the whole packet, and.
Well.
I found it interesting. I didn't know what it applied to.
Well, I wonder if they're prohibited from allowing these virtual meetings in addition to a regular in-person meeting? I wonder if that's like specifically prohibited in law, or if what you might be referencing is just that if they can't hold it in person, they must offer at least a virtual opportunity because of the open meeting. So, I wonder if they could do virtual if they can't do in person, or both if they can do in person. I wonder if they, if they have the option.
The Open Meetings Act is pretty much suspended because of COVID, so.
Right.
That's why, that's why we've got these sort of options. And, you know, even before COVID, you could watch it on YouTube. You just couldn't participate and jump in. So, I don't know. I think maybe, and quite frankly, a lot of these meetings are darn long, long enough. And if you care about something enough, then it might be not a bad thing to make people come down and, and stand at the podium and present their case.
Sure, if there's seating, but I think seating has always been an issue, right?
Elaine, if you were referring to what I was referring to in your question, I'm, I'm only referencing a bold paragraph that's right here on the agenda for, like for today's meeting, and I.
Yeah, no, I wasn't talking about that. Yeah, I wasn't talking about that specifically. I was wondering if, when they go back to in-person meetings, if it's an option to do the in-person plus the virtual.
Gotcha. Gotcha, but my. I understand, but my question was this, on this particular agenda, absolutely current, this bold writing says, "This meeting will be conducted utilizing video conferencing, and city council members, staff, and citizens will participate via audio only." I just think that that's a little bit confusing, since we obviously participate with audio and video.
Yeah. Let me see.
I believe Sandra Burton is the person who, who writes those. And if you sent her a note, I bet you'd have that corrected for the next meeting.
Yeah, sometimes they just. Look what the packet is here. How big is this? Well, we can see how long this is gonna take by how big the packet is. So, if everybody will go to pay for the packet. No.
I don't know, the way the content was written, it didn't seem like it would, it would be too drawn out. A lot of the, a lot of the printing in the packet was documentation and like ordinance regulations, printing, reprinting out ordinance regulations and such.
Hi, Christine.
Or reference.
This is the empty. You know. I'm just happy to see other faces besides my own. Living alone during COVID is not really fun. My neighbors, I'm sure, are getting so sick of me. Anytime they catch me out, I'm like, "Talk to me, talk to me."
Has anybody heard any pros and cons about the Walters property being annexed at the top of the point there?
I haven't, hasn't already been voiced. Either way.
I heard that it's going to be wonderful.
Laura, do you know where Diane lives?
I don't know that I do. I, I'm under the impression that she's around the bend from us.
So, on the inside of our cove? So, right there on the point, you know where Justin and Jenny Rogers' property is?
Yes.
Okay, hers is the 13-acre tract next to that one.
Oh, okay, okay.
Actually, Paul, what are you talking about? Justin and Jenny Rogers, they're on the point. I am, I abut Keith's, now Keith's.
Right.
Yeah, but you're, you're, we're talking about the annexation of the, the 16 acres that are at the top of the peninsula, right, Laura?
Yes, ma'am.
Not the, not down at, not down at the point.
Right.
The Old Nature's Point. You're not talking about the Old Nature's Point, is that correct?
That's right. So, we're talking about the horse farm.
That, that's, yes. The, the Old Nature's Point is what abuts up to Justin and Jenny. But no, I abut to the western side of, of Axel's property, of now Keith's property. They're at the top of Lake Shore Boulevard.
The boat dock is anchored to her property right now.
Got it, got it.
Then I'm the house that you see on the other side of the cove.
Right. Both of those are great properties. Such a, I love that little area right there.
We love our little cove, too. And we're glad that Keith agrees with keeping our cove the nature, the aesthetics, such as they are.
Oh, absolutely.
In other words, he's, he does not want to see increased density on Cottonwood Hollow,
Sandra, you can please note that Councilman Davila joined us at 6:10. All right, let's see, there's Tim, there's Arch, and there's Dick, there's Dave, there's Frank. All right, we have everybody, correct?
Is Arch caller number one?
Oh, no, I think you're right. I think Dick Demian is caller number one. So we're still waiting for Arch then. Mayor, did you see the chat?
Yes.
Thank you.
I did.
Thank you.
All right, hello, Arch. Did you get my email about Mr. Demian's presentation? Josh?
No, sir, do you have it? You sent it today?
Yes, probably about 5:40.
Okay, I see it now, and Dave has made me a presenter, so I should be ready.
Okay. Caller one, is that Arch?
That's our presenter, isn't it?
No, I see him listed up here. He's put his name to his now. I don't know who caller one is. Arch, are you online?
Message him now, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, this might be a good time to explain to folks how we're gonna use the chat function going forward to ensure that we're all in good, good standing here.
Okay. Thank you, I'll do that. So the chat box. We are going as a council discontinue using this chat box for official business. It has gotten to where it's creating conversations within conversations, meetings within meetings, and it is too hard to document for open records, open meetings, and it's too difficult for everybody to keep track of. So you can put stuff in the chat box if you so wish, but Josh will not respond, and nobody from council will respond to the chats. So the chat box is there, but it will not be used for official city council business. So for those of you who have questions, when we get to that agenda item or that item, you know, that item on the agenda, you will have to raise your hand or alert me somehow, not just put it in the chat box that you have, you know, question.
Mayor, just a message back from Arch. I gave him the phone number to call in while he's getting his he's having an issue with the computer still, so he's gonna call in, and we can get rolling.
Okay. And just before I completely get off the chat box thing, someone had asked that all council members be on camera. That is a nice suggestion, but that is not possible. As you know, we've got one that's gonna have to call in on his phone, so getting them all on camera is impossible. And sometimes people do not have, depending on their networks, don't have the bandwidth, and if we can see them, we can't hear them, so we have to make accommodations so everybody can participate, but not necessarily be visible. All right. All right, well, when Arch calls in, he can call in. I'm gonna go ahead and get us rolling. Action items. All right, we reconvene from executive session into open session to act as deemed appropriate in city councils discretion. We reconvene at 6:40 PM. Make that note here. We'll take action, any necessary action regarding any regular meeting, agenda item requiring confidential attorney-client advice necessitated by the deliberation or discussion of said item. The item we discussed was number six. It appears later in the agenda, and so any necessary action will be taken once we get to agenda item number six. So there's no action to be taken at this time unless somebody else has something else. All right. We will go into citizen comments. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. Is there anybody who would like to make some comments? Paul, I see your hand up.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The deadline for both businesses and citizens to sign up for logo books has passed September 30th. Any indications thus far of the participation rate or any kind of indication of files?
So Paul, that is on our agenda. It is item number 11, and I will discuss that when we get to agenda item number 11.
Thank you.
Thank you. Darcy, you're recognized.
Oops, thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. I just have a few questions if I can ask them very quickly. The first one is for you, Mayor Tedwell. Sorry, I'm trying to address you properly. Recently, I watched some city council members, and I had heard that through somebody that an independent study was done and sent out to three bodies about the whole thing about city council, and I'm wondering if we can find those papers, or did they just just say that they didn't want to take up the case because it wasn't worth their time? I'm trying to get that clarified, because it actually came out that you sent these independent people. So I just want to clear that one up. That's number one. Number two is I have a question about, this is about ISD-related, but it also is city-related, and I don't know who would answer this question. I'm wondering if an independent study has been done, or who would do the study on the environmental impact if they removed 32 acres of trees on this hillside for the new bus barn, and I'm also wondering if a traffic study has been done for Travis Travis? And also, what about putting a light up there on Lowman Ford Road, because that is such a dangerous curve right there? So I'm wondering about that. And then my third question is for Mr. Josh Ray, city manager, is I'm wondering, who before Eric Belgey, I can't pronounce your name, I'm sorry, Eric, was our city head of our public works? And I'm wondering when that date took place? So when did Eric take the job? And when did the person behind him leave? Because I found an application from 2017 that Chris Harking had put up, and that was for someone for that department, and I'm wondering if an application went out to find someone? And because I have a paper that's signed, and I cannot read the signature on it, and it's not Eric. So I'm just wondering what is the exact date that Eric took that position? And those are my three questions. Thank you.
All right, so number one. The complaint was filed by Don with the police department, and upon his request, it was sent to the county, the district attorney, the county attorney, and the state attorney general. They all responded through the police department. So for their responses, you would need to go through Erin, and she'll have to reach out to the police department to get the actual responses. And I do not know that I don't know if they were written or verbal. I do know that one was written, but I don't know if all of them were that way, but so, yes.
Okay, so nothing was actually sent to them. No files, no, this is what we've got, here's our paperwork. Nothing was actually sent to them. It was just through the police department. That's what I was wondering, but thank you for your answer.
Yes, the complaints were, the complaint was sent. The complaint is what was sent. For your second question, anybody, whether it's ISD or anybody that's developing anything, they've all got to go through the same environmental studies, traffic studies. Everybody's got to go through the exact same process. So they will be responsible for making sure they adhere to our ordinances. And three, I don't have the exact information, but our public works director prior to Eric was David Harrell. And Eric came in in February of 20, January of 2018, January, I don't know. I don't know the exact day that he joined us, but it was January or February of 2018.
Mayor, if I can add to that one?
Yes.
David Harrell was Development Services Director before Roy. Gary Graham served as the Public Works Director and City Engineer prior to Eric. And Eric was, you're correct, Eric was February of 18.
Okay.
You had the name.
I had the right name, just wrong department.
Right.
So Eric was actually hired on as the City Engineer, Public Works Department, correct? Okay, thank you. That's what I needed to know. I was just wondering.
Okay. And Mr. Robbins, did you have something?
I was there.
Okay. Okay, so we're continuing with citizen comments. Is there anybody else who has any thing they would like to address the council on? All right, we will move on to items of community interest. I'm sorry, Diane.
Mic's off, sorry, I forgot to turn it on. Yes, I wanted to follow up on Darcy's first question with regard to what she asked. I'm not sure that I got clarification of what she asked, because I think embedded in there was also if there was not just the complaint filed to the three departments, but was there substantiation paperwork that was also filed? And I didn't hear an answer to that, but yet I heard a conclusion from Darcy that there was no substantiation that was filed in the process, and I'm not sure I heard that in your answer, Mayor Tedwell. So in the filing, so I'm just gonna rephrase it slightly. In the filings that were filed with those three entities, was there substantiation along with the forms and the formal complaint that they evaluated in their response, if indeed it was a written response from each of those entities? And us getting, also following up to us being able to get those written responses?
That's what I want.
Okay, so I do not know what information other than the complaint was filed. That was not, I was not given that information. That was between Counselor Barthow and the police department. I just know he filed a complaint. What information he provided, I do not know. But it was sent to the agencies that he requested. That was the district attorney, the county attorney, and the Attorney General's office. And then they responded back that they were not gonna pursue. So that is all I know. And the actual responses, again, you'll have to go through Erin and the police department to see how the actual, the conversations between those agencies and the police department.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
All right. So. Yes, Christina?
So there was no outside investigation done, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay, thanks.
They all, all three, all three declined. All right. I will go into items of community interest. All right, items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415, the city council may report on any of the following items: expressions of thanks, gratitude, and condolences; information regarding holiday schedules; recognition of individuals; reminders regarding city council events; reminders regarding community events; and health and safety announcements. And I have a couple of items that the community has sent to me. Let me get to those that they asked for me to share with y'all. So bear with me. Because I have some reading to do here. Dear Mayors of Texas, in May of this year, more than 125 businesses and organizations from around the state helped to celebrate National Teacher Appreciation Week 2020 with the public debut of hashtag Teachers Can. And they call for public nominations of teachers going above and beyond during the COVID-19 crisis. In total, more than 12,000 nominations came in, and more than $60,000 in prizes were awarded to outstanding educators. In addition, the coalition hosted more than 40 virtual events, including concerts, cooking demonstrations, fitness, meditation sessions, and the first-ever virtual HEB Excellence in Education Awards, which included several guest appearances from some very famous Texans. And it says, "All right, all right, all right." I don't know what that means, but since launching, many participating organizations have hosted additional activities and events to help continue the momentum, which is exactly the idea. The next big collective push for the coalition will be World Teachers Day on October 5th. There, we are asking our partners to develop creative and locally relevant ways to celebrate and rally teachers on that day. The theme for this year's World Teachers Day, hosted and sponsored by UNESCO, is Leading in Crisis: Reimagining the Future, which is obviously very timely. To help mark the occasion and amplify the message, we are inviting cities and businesses across the state to take part in the Teachers Light the Way Celebration. Beginning at 5:00 PM on Monday, October 5th, we would like to see as many iconic buildings and municipal facilities as possible illuminated and light blue as a way to spread both inspiration and joy when it is desperately needed, and to remind teachers that the daily difference they are making does not go unnoticed. The year 2020 will go down in the history books for a number of reasons, but our goal is to make one of them the burial of the old and outdated phrase, "Those who can do, those who can't teach." We believe that nothing could be further from the truth, and amidst incredible odds, Texas educators have demonstrated this over and over again throughout the past several months. Please join us and help to restore the profession of teaching to the level of respect and appreciation it deserves in our state and our country. Many thanks for your incredible leadership during these certain times, and all you do to support our schools. With gratitude, Dr. Sherry Albright, President, Raise Your Hand, Texas Foundation, and Kate Rogers, Vice President of the Charles Butt Foundation. So they just got me this. So they just got me this, um, item of community interest the other day. I don't know where we'll try and participate, but I don't know that many of our municipal buildings will be lit in light blue on Monday. But if there's any business owners out there that would like to participate or homeowners, uh, if you would like to participate in recognizing, uh, teachers like the way. They're asking to, for you to light your building or your residence or anything in light blue. So there's, there's that one. Uh, okay. Next. Texas Chiropractic Association joins American Chiropractic Association to celebrate National Chiropractic Health Month. In conjunction with the Ameri, with ACA and the TCA, the TCA is pleased to designate October 2020 as National Chiropractic Health Month. National Chiropractic Health Month is a nationwide observance held each October. The event seeks to increase public awareness of the importance of musculoskeletal health and the benefits of chiropractic care and its natural whole person, patient centered and drug free approach to health and wellness. With the theme active and adaptive National Chiropractic Health Month 2020 will focus on helping people adapt to the new normal and maintain musculoskeletal health and function in the wake of the coronavirus pandemic. After months of sheltering in place, many people are still practicing lifestyle changes necessitated by the pandemic to reduce their exposure, avoiding crowded public areas, working from home, choosing car trips instead of air travel, ordering food and supplies online, and avoiding gyms and other enclosed interior spaces where people gather. As a result, many people are moving around less. Some are experiencing pain. NCHM 2020 will encourage the public to adjust to the challenges of staying fit and pain free with a smaller lifestyle footprint by becoming more mindful of movement and posture, and by highlighting tips and strategies to help them adapt in healthy ways. In celebration of NCHM, TCA has requested a proclamation from Texas Governor Greg Abbott, declaring October 2020 as Texas Chiropractic Health Month. The Texas Chiropractic Association is thrilled to work closely with the American Chiropractic Association to commemorate National Chiropractic Health Month in October 2020 in Texas. During the coronavirus pandemic, it is more important than ever that people stay healthy and active. CNA chiropractor is a safe, drug-free approach to optimize health and well, wellness. And they have given me the proclamation to read. So whereas chiropractors are physician level healthcare providers who focus on the whole person as part of their hands-on, non-drug approach to pain management and health promotion, and who have special expertise in the prevention, treatment and rehab of musculoskeletal conditions and injuries. Whereas chiropractors were identified in a March 2020 memo by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security as part of the essential healthcare workforce, workforce. And many have continued to serve their patients and communities since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas with many Americans working from home and attending school online since the beginning of the pandemic, the incidence of musculoskeletal conditions has grown due in part to an increase in sedentary lifestyles, poor posture and stress. Whereas even before the pandemic, musculoskeletal conditions have been among the most commonly reported medical conditions for adults and seniors, among them, low back pain is the single leading cause of disability worldwide, preventing people from participating in daily and recreational activities. Whereas chiropractic care is widely recognized as one of the safest, non-drug, non-invasive approaches available for the treatment of low back pain and other musculoskeletal complaints. Whereas in addition to their expertise in spinal manipulation, chiropractors have broad diagnostic skills and are trained to recommend therapeutic and rehabilitative exercises and to provide nutritional dietary and lifestyle advice. Whereas chiropractors recognize that physical activity can improve symptoms, decrease disability and improve function and wellbeing in a range of chronic musculoskeletal conditions, in addition to reducing stress and anxiety and enhancing sleep and quality of life. Whereas the College of Physicians Low Back Pain Treatment Guidelines released in 2017 promote the use of non-invasive, non-drug approaches such as spinal manipulation as a first line of defense against back pain. And groups such as the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and the Joint Commission have also adopted positions supporting this approach. Whereas National Chiropractic Health Month 2020 serves as a reminder to all citizens of the city of Lago Vista that non-invasive, non-drug treatments for low back pain and other musculoskeletal conditions such as spinal manipulation and other chiropractic services combined with an active, healthy lifestyle may lessen or eliminate the need for riskier, potentially addictive treatments such as prescription pain medications and surgery. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Lago Vista officially joins with the American Chiropractic Association as it promotes the benefits of movement, good posture, healthy living and a non-drug approach to maintain, to pain management with its active and adaptive campaign by proclaiming October 2020 National Chiropractic Health Month. Signed Ed Tidwell, Mayor, City of Lago Vista, October 1st, 2020. Thank you. All right. That is the two I have. Josh, I think you had something to.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to let everyone know that we have put the FY21 adopted budget on the website. We have hard copies of the budget available in city hall and at the library. If someone wanted to sit down and review it or make copies at the library, I would encourage you to go to that location to pull it up, but you can easily look at the electronic version online or you can, uh, print that electronic version. You can also pull up documents through cleargov.com, type in Lago Vista, Texas. When you pull it up, you'll see Lago Vista ISD and Lago Vista, the city. Click on our city and you can go through that active version. So if anyone has any questions about it, please email those to me and check it out. But, uh, we do have those documents completed now. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. And I was wrong. I do have more information for you. Uh, regarding community events or city council events, I should say. We have multiple committees, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight committees that have terms expiring December 31st. In every committee, half the positions expire each year. So the, I'm not going to list the, the, I'm not going to go through all the names of the people whose terms are expiring, uh, that's in the packet. But the airport advisory board has three expiring positions. The board of adjustment has four expiring positions. Building and standards commission has four expiring positions. Planning and zoning commission has three expiring positions. The economic development advisory committee has three members with expiration dates of January 2021. Parks and Rec Advisory Committee has the following members' terms expire. Uh, there's four there. Library Advisory Board has terms expiring. There's three. And golf course advisory committee also has three. So that's that. Anybody else on council have any announcements for items of community interest? All right. No one from council. Darcy, did you have something, item of community interest?
Well, I was just wondering, how do you apply for those? Like, there's a lot of us out here that don't understand this big process. And so it would be nice to know, how do I go about like wanting to be on one of these committees? Is there paperwork? Do I need to come downtown? Do, what, what, what's the process? I mean, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Yes, on the website, it has all the information about the expiration of council and how to apply and everything. And everybody has to apply, even the council members whose terms are expiring. If they want to, uh, reapply, they still have to apply. They don't, uh, and they're considered along with everybody else. Uh, they're not just automatically reapproved. So, uh, applications are taken through, um, the month of November. And then all the applications with the, with their, uh, desires are presented to the liaisons of each, board, commission, committee. And then, uh, in December, the liaisons will bring back their nominations and council will approve them. And then they will take office in December. But, uh, yes, all that information is on the website. And otherwise you can contact the city secretary and she can direct you with how to apply for all this stuff.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. We will move on to presentation number three. Household hazardous waste collection. Josh, do you have that picture in our packet? Can you share that? Did I include it in the packet? Not, not, uh, Mr. Demian's presentation, but just, um, the picture that I presented, probably page 19 or 20. Are you able to share?
I have pictures on, uh, mine, HHW Solutions.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to show that to the members in case they're not actually looking at the packet.
Maybe page 19.
Be the next one. There we go. Right there. Okay. So the reason I got this up here is because, oh, two years ago, we held a household hazardous waste collection event. This was the second collection event that you're seeing the picture of here. Uh, on your far left, you can see the barrels with the, um, oil and, and oil collection there. Uh, in the middle here is all your paints. And kind of on the right, you can see the, uh, tires. Because we do not have a facility, gosh, within at least 30 miles of Lago Vista where people can take their household hazardous waste. Uh, you can see people have stored this in their garage forever. Uh, I know standing out there in the rain, one of the coolest things I saw was somebody brought in a can of oil that was still in the cardboard wax lined, oil can that you used to have to stick that puncture with that thing and pour it into your engine. That had to be, gosh, I don't know, 25, 30 years old or more. Anyway, people have been storing household hazardous waste in their garages and you can't dispose of it in your trash cans. Things like that. So it's been an effort of mine to try and get something out here to our community, our surrounding area, um, to help with this household hazardous waste. Cause one thing I don't want it to do is be thrown out in our, in our dead end streets and end up in our, our creeks and going into the lake. All those things. You know, disposal of household hazardous waste is a, is a big issue. Tonight I have asked a gentleman, his name is, uh, Dick Demian. He is with, uh, Household Hazardous Waste Solutions. This is just a presentation. This is not up for action or consideration or anything like that. This is just a presentation, uh, that I want to make. That I've asked him to make for our council members and our citizens, just to give you a reference of a, something that is available to our community and then get y'all's feedback of whether this is something that you would, you would like to see, uh, in our community. And, uh, he will touch on this in his presentation. But the, the program he is talking, he will be discussing is a door-to-door pickup, very similar to your trash can services. Uh, you know how you have, the trash company comes around every week for trash, every two weeks for your recycling. And that is a contract service that we pass on through the city. And this is a very similar program. And at this time, I'm going to bring Mr. Demian in and let him talk about his program. And then over, you know, we'll go from there. So Mr. Demian, if you are, can you hear me? And if you're got your speaker on, your microphone on, it is now your program.
All right. Great. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Great. All right. Um, and Josh, you're going to do the, uh, slide presentation as I go through? Is that kind of the game plan?
Yes, sir. You tell me the slide and I will keep it moving forward.
All right. I got you. Uh, so you're on the right one. Uh, as an introduction, uh, my name is Dick Demian and I'm with a company called HHW Solutions. And we partner with cities to provide front porch household hazardous waste collection, uh, on a monthly or weekly basis, depending on what the city would like. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. We've been in business just about three years now. We've partnered with, uh, 13 different cities at this point, which is a very good growth. Those cities represent over 45,000 households. The, the, the growth that we've had has been really fostered by the fact that we have such, uh, exceptional service at such a fair price. It's, uh, city managers and city council people often tell me it's not very often that they get more compliments on a program than complaints, but that's, that's the situation with, uh, with us here at HHW Solutions. Next, next slide, please. So what is household hazardous waste? Uh, next slide. Of course, the mayor just had the, the picture out that kind of told the story. I don't often get that, so I appreciate it. But what we're talking about is items you'll typically buy at Ace Hardware or Walmart, cleaners, drain openers, automotive fluids, and you use a portion of what it is that you purchase, but then you have a leftover amount as well. So people, you know, are kind of in a quandary on, on how to get rid of that excess quantity that they have in their house. Next slide, please. So what, what's the big problem? Uh, next slide. As the mayor explained, uh, it is illegal for it to go into landfills. So because of that, trash companies will not collect it. If they see it on the curb or in the trash, they'll take it out, set it aside and then dump the remaining of that, of the household, uh, trash to get rid of that. So people are kind of forced to hold it in their, in their garages or under their sinks, which can be dangerous for first responders. I've had several firemen tell me that garage fires are particularly scary because of all the chemicals that are often stored in there. They're difficult to get rid of. Uh, and as people come up with more and more and more of this household hazardous waste, oftentimes they'll resort to, uh, illegal dumping, taking it someplace where shit can go. And then leaving it, um, on an illegal dumping basis. Uh, next slide, please. So cities have come up with varying strategies to get rid of their household hazardous waste in their cities. So let me go through a couple of those. Some cities do nothing. If you go on the website of some cities and towns, it'll just say household hazardous waste. Consult the TTEQ for disposal. I mean, they're really just kind of punting the whole program. They don't offer the residents any real guidelines or realistic, uh, methods to get rid of their HHW. Uh, some have regional drop-off facilities, which is what it sounds like you have there. But that requires people to drive 30 miles, uh, one way, often sit in a line 30 miles back. It could result in two to three hours of transport time and line waiting time. It could result in two to three hours of transport time and line waiting time. And no one wants to do that, particularly on a Saturday, which, you know, is often kids' birthday parties, soccer games, different events that, that people do on the weekends. They certainly don't want to spend it driving to and from a household hazardous waste facility. In those facilities, they often have what I call very wonky hours. Here in Dallas, we have a drop-off facility, and they just stopped their Saturday service. They used to have Saturdays, but now it's just on Tuesday and Wednesday. That's the only two days that are open. And we see this pretty often around different cities that we, we visit with because staffing those drop-off facilities is expensive and it's not a, a smooth, calculatable enough of a demand for it. Sometimes it's high demand, sometimes it's slow demand. And the cities have a hard time really keeping staffing at an appropriate level for it. Some people, some cities have gone to a cred cruiser events, which is where a, a truck will come out, usually affiliated with a county drop-off facility. They'll do that once or twice a year, and everybody brings their items to a central location to drop their items off at this cred cruiser, as it's often called. But that's usually only open about one or two hours. So, if you thought there was a big line for the unusual hours at the regional drop-off facilities, we see crazy lines at these one-to-two-hour events. Because the way they work is, once the truck is full, they pull the plug. So, if you've been in line for an hour and the truck gets full on two cars in front of you, well, the event's over, and you just have to wait for the next event. And that often results in some aggravated citizens. And then, it is, there's a subject, or they're subject to weather conditions. If it's particularly cold or rainy, many times people won't want to go. They'll just wait for the next event. And, or even if you go, it's miserable to be out in the cold rain waiting for the, your turn in line. Some communities have contracted with some private haulers, which will give you long hours, but they can be very, very expensive. I saw an invoice from one of the national HHW collection groups for a city. And that invoice was over a hundred thousand dollars for a one-day event. So, they can get very expensive if you start using the, the private haulers instead of the county. They give you a little better service, but it's still usually just one day, but often quite expensive. Next slide, please. So, what can we do for you that nobody else is doing for you at this point? Number one, we provide a monthly or weekly service instead of a one-time event. So, on a monthly service, you can have someone come out to your home, pick up your HHW items from your front porch twelve times a year. You don't have to take them anywhere. You don't have to wait for a special day. Just, you call in to get on a list. We run the list on a, on a specific day. You set the items out before you go to work, and when you come home at the end of the day, they'll have been picked up. It's extremely convenient. I, I don't know that we could make it any more convenient than that unless we went into your garage and went to your shelf and found your items for you. But we, we ask that, you put them on the front porch and we'll get them picked up. It's very cost-effective. The rate we charge for once a month pickup is eighty-nine cents per home per month. Most cities attach that to their water bill, very similarly to how trash and recycle go. So, once a resident gets their utility bill, they can look, and, and in most cities, they have a solid waste line. And that line, if it said fifteen dollars before, now it could say fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents, and it would now include the HHW collection. But with this service, the city doesn't have to staff any facility. They don't have to worry about the ebb and flow of, of demand for the facility. Residents are just having items picked up at their house, so it's extremely convenient for everybody. Next slide, please. So, how would citizens sign up for this service if you decided to go with? We have two methodologies. One is to go online. We have a website called HHWSolutions.com. Residents would go in there, click a button that says, "Schedule a Pickup." That would take them to a signup sheet, which I'll show you here in just a moment. And that signup sheet will list, you know, you'll list your name, address, phone number, the items that you have out, the volumes that you have to pick up, and any other notes that you need to include. We'll send you an email as a reminder the day before pickup to let you know, to remind you to put your items out. And then we'll come out on the appointed day and get those items collected for you. Next slide. This is what the signup sheet looks like if you go online. Just like I said, name, address, phone number. There's actually a little bit more volume that didn't fit on this slide, but it's very basic information that will help us get you on the route and be ready to get you picked up on your collection day. There is also a call-in number, which folks that don't like to go online to set up for service, they can call in and talk to one of our customer service representatives and get onto the route sheet that way as well. So, what items do we accept? It's a pretty full menu of items. Motor oil, cooking oil, all kinds of batteries, light bulbs, cleaners, auto fluids, fertilizers, weed killers, cool chemicals, paints, basically any, any of those items that we were talking about that you'd get at Ace Hardware, that you had some leftover. Those are the types of items that we're going to pick up. Now, in the picture that was shown a little earlier, it showed tires. We do not pick up tires. We can help you get a tire event organized, but just a part of our monthly collection does not include tires. I'm sorry, I backtracked on you a little bit. Go ahead. The items that we pick up, we bring to our TTEQ-approved aggregation facility. So, to get this facility permitted through the TTEQ, they had to sign off on the location. Obviously, we had to submit paperwork. The City of Mesquite where it's located required us to do a special use permit, which was ultimately approved by the city council. We are required to carry two million dollars of pollution liability and general liability coverage through insurance, which we do. And we had to submit a bond to the TTEQ for post-closure to ensure that we didn't just leave the facility full of HHW and leave town. So, we've been thoroughly vetted, we're entirely permitted, insured. And so, any, any of those types of concerns are, are put to bed with that. Next question. How do we process the collective items? We do a number of things. Different items can handle different ways. Motor oils and transmission oils get recycled as do cooking oils. The oil-based paints are re-blended for fueling purposes. We're given this guideline from the TTEQ, how they would like to see items disposed of or dealt with. The number one is reuse. We do have that. We pick up, the items that we pick up, we have a periodic reuse day where there's usable quantities of items left in the containers. For example, if there is a half a gallon full of paint thinner, and the, the, they bought a gallon, they used half of it, a half a gallon is still left. We put that on our shelf, and we store, and we start building an inventory of that and bug killers, fertilizers, all types of chemicals that are still good, they're just partially used. And then periodically, we'll open it up to the community where they can come in and get those items for free, no charge. And then they can use those unused quantities of various chemicals in their homes. And that keeps them out of the landfill altogether, and they're reused for their intended purpose. Some is recycled, as I talked about, the motor, the used motor oil, we recycle, as well as used cooking oil. The recycling for energy recovery, that's the fuel blending with the oil-based paints. And then there are some other ones here that we don't use, which is the treatment, the two treatments we don't use, and we don't use the underground injection. But then on some items, latex paint, for example, we have to landfill disposal. There's a special landfill south of Fort Worth that has a special permit to allow, to allow it to accept latex paints. And we partner with them to dispose of the latex paints. All right, next slide. So, our process is very safe, it's very convenient, and very cost-effective. We, like I said, we've, we've partnered with thirteen different cities, representing over forty-five thousand residents, or residential homes, is the better way to say it. And I've included all of them here, along with their contact information. And I certainly would be hopeful that if you were serious about moving forward with us, that you would call a couple of these and get feedback from them about our performance and about how their citizens appreciate the, the service. And I think you'll get glowing reviews on what we're doing. So, with that, I'll be glad to take any questions.
All right, I'll start with council. Does council have any questions? Yes, Dick.
My only question would be, do you have that many people that have something once a month to do this? I know with our collection, a number of people that I talked to that took part in it, they got rid of stuff that they've had for a number of years. But once they got rid of that, they really didn't have anything else that they would have put in it later. Do you, do you see a fairly large amount of materials that people are bringing? That you're, that you're having a, a good number of people that need your services every month?
Yes, so that, that's a great question. And the, the best way I can describe that is that it varies fairly significantly from city to city. In some cities, there might be only ten or fifteen pickups each month. In other cities, we're seeing, like, I'm trying to, like, we do it weekly in Rockwall. They typically have about fifty pickups per week, so we're over two hundred pickups per month in Rockwall. So, it varies depending on the community. And so, I, I don't, you know, I can't sit here and tell you that, you know, you have a thirty percent, forty percent, or fifty percent usage in, in Lago Vista. But if, if you have a, a group of citizens that are environmentally conscious, I think you'll find that people use it, and they only use it once, they start using it all the time. We, we have a number of customers that put stuff out at least once a month. If, and then in the weekly customers or weekly cities, we have some that put stuff out two or three times a month.
And if I, if I may, Dick, that's something, and that's why I bring this presentation to the, to the citizens. Because if, if this was something we went through, you're looking at adding a dollar roughly, let's just call it, round it up to a dollar, a dollar a month per household, over a year, that's twelve dollars. You know, if they only use it once a year, is that, is that twelve dollars a year? Is it, is it worth the service? You know, as opposed to having to drive to South Austin or wherever, you know, to dispose of the stuff? So, that's something that, you know, we all have to consider when we're looking at this program. So, yes, Arch.
Yes, Mayor, I have two questions. The first one is, is the contracting done individually by the individual homeowner? Or is this a city that does the contracting? And my second question is, how are the, how is the, the scheduling done? Is it done again individually, or is this done by the city? Thank you.
Yes, so the, the way our program works is, is that we would contract with the city, and then all residents of the city would be entitled to use the service every month. So, it would, so the city would collect the, the one dollar for conversation's sake from the city, or from the residents. And then, we would remit an invoice to the city for the number of residents times one dollar. And then the city would collect that and, and send it back to us. And I'm sorry, I forgot your second question. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, remind me of your second question.
It was regarding who does the scheduling.
Scheduling, yes, so we would have a slotted date for you each month. If, for example, it would be like the first Monday, or the second Tuesday, or there would be some type of a slotted day for you, for your residents each month. And they would know that that's when, you know, when they're working that weekend, fertilizing their yard, and they ended up with a little bit extra fertilizer, they'd know that they need to sign up for next weekend, or whatever the case may be, whenever the next pickup is. But it would be the same day each month. So, again, not the date, but the first Monday or first Tuesday. There'd be a, a day slotted that would be the same each month.
Yes, David.
So, you were talking about recycling, like if there was a half a can of paint thinner. Where do you, when you pick up product like this, where do you take it? Is it taken somewhere in Austin and stored there? Or you take it all the way to Dallas? Or where do you take all this stuff?
Yeah, we take everything back to our aggregation facility, which is in Mesquite, right outside of Dallas.
Okay. So, the only people that would show up to purchase recycled material would be up in the Dallas area, correct?
Right, and they don't purchase it, it's, it's free of charge, but that's correct. Just the Dallas area people would come out to, or that's who comes out to get the items on reuse days.
Okay.
Any other council members? Yes, Arch.
Turn your mic on.
Yeah, my, my microphone is a little slow. Yeah, my other question is, do you pick up concrete mix, the stuff that comes in bags?
We do pick it up. Now, we get a lot of that. So, I say a lot of it, because not very much of it's pretty heavy, but we do collect it as, as we go, yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other council members have questions?
Yes. What, what about some of our commercial properties? Do they get to participate in something like this, too?
No, the, the TTEQ is pretty, is, is quite firm on, on the program. The reason they grant the HHW, or the household hazardous waste provision is to make it easy for residents to get rid of their items. Commercial entities would still have to go through the regular program where they would have to contact a hazardous waste hauler, you know, get a quote for hauling their items, get a manifested load, and have it shipped to wherever it needs to go. So, this is strictly for homeowners. And that's not driven by volume. Sometimes, there's like an accounting office, for example, with two people in it, that produces less household hazardous waste than a family with eight family members. But still, it's the household designation that makes the difference. So, there is no commercial or business pickup at all with this program.
What, what, what about a, a home business such as a pet shop, a pet groomer, or something like that?
Right, I mean, I, there's a pretty good chance that it would just slide in under the radar on us if someone called in from 125 Oak Street, and we got there and it looked like a residence, and there's, you know, some products out there, and we, we just pick them up. I don't, I don't think we would know. Typically, the, what, what triggers us to call the customer and tell them that we can't pick it up is if we pull up to a, a business somewhere.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Anybody else on council have questions? All right, Diane, do you have a question for Dick?
I, I, I have a question and a comment. I just want to say as a comment that I am really excited about this proposition because as a consumer and as a person always looking for ways to decrease our footprint, I, I'm always looking for those. And it was, it was, it was not present in Lago Vista where I've lived before. And so I think it's a terrific idea. My question is with regard to looking at the list, the spreadsheet, was it Damian? No, Dick. Mr. Damian, the, I, I just noticed, glanced Was it Damian? No, Dick. Mr. Damian, the, I, I just noticed, glanced over it briefly, the cities and it didn't, the, the gist of it didn't seem to be there. There were cities that were close to us. And I would think that if you are able to have a compilation in a, in a regional area, it would make things more efficient and logistics more efficient and cost effective. So if it was, right now, we're just talking Lago Vista and maybe on a monthly basis. But if, for example, we, in communication with our neighbor, with our neighbors, then what is it? Venture, Bishop Point, Ventura? I forget the V word down here at the corner. I apologize. But Jonestown and the, our neighboring small cities here on the lake that we would, we would eventually maybe be able to go down in costs or maybe go to two, you know, every two weeks, bi-monthly, that sort of a thing. Is that, is that like a reasonable goal to have?
It's not going to affect the cost. We have, if you look at this spreadsheet, our biggest customer is the city of Rockwall, which is close to fifteen thousand homes now. And our smallest is a town of Westover Hills, which is two hundred and eighty-six residents and everybody pays the base rate of eighty-nine cents. So that is just kind of the price that, that rolled out. We, we do want to expand to the Austin area. It is something that we have been working on. We recently, at the beginning of this year, we started two contracts in the Houston area that we're looking to do some greater expansion in that area as well. So while we would be more efficient and more economical once we can start filling in some additional cities in the Austin area, we would just bring them on. It would just bring our margins back to where we're kind of, kind of what our pro forma margins are. We're, so in other words, we're, we're operating less profitably in the beginning just because we're interested in getting in the Austin area. And then as we add in there, we get back to what we're expecting.
Yeah, and it's incentive for, for, for businesses to go into businesses like this. If we have Lago Vista and Point Venture and Jonestown, just right here in this little quadrant, maybe Mar- Mar- Falls a little bit further. But that, that would definitely allow you to be more cost effective. And, and, and the more it happens, the more regularly, the more people get used to being able to do that. And they'd be, they'll be more proactive in, in looking for it. I mean, there's always going to be some people that are going to dump their oil in the woods someplace. But I think for the most part, most of us want to do better. And I just think it's super, super idea. And I appreciate you guys doing this.
I appreciate that. And, and to that point, I mean, the more convenient it is, the more people will participate. So, you know, while you may not have a lot of people driving, you know, thirty miles one way to take items, it's, it's, it's because it's not that convenient. And once it gets, people understand that they can just set their items on their front porch, go to work, come home at the end of the day and they're gone. That's really going to increase participation in the program.
Absolutely.
Yes, Arch.
Microphone.
Yeah, I see that. Hey, sorry. Again, my microphone is a little slow. My question is this, what is the length of the contract that the city would be contracting for? Would it be one year, five years, ten years? What, what is that length?
A three-year contract.
Thank you.
Darcy.
Hold on, let me get in there. I'd like to first thank whoever Ed, City Manager, Mayor Tedwell, brought this to us. This is a fantastic idea. I would like to thank the presenter for a great presentation. And then I would like to say, so I live in a condo association and we don't actually do our trash through the city. We have a private entity come and pick it up. But I'm wondering, because we're all on the city water, would we actually be included in this as well? And then another question I would have to say is, I was actually a professional organizer, home stager for fourteen years, and I dealt with a lot of trash in my life. I dealt with hoarders and all sorts of stuff. And I can tell the people right now, if you are hiring someone to help you with your home, it's going to cost you a fortune, okay? To get rid of this type of stuff. I would charge people fifty-five dollars an hour, twenty-five dollars for my helper, twenty-five dollars a day for my trailer, and then all the fees included in taking the stuff to where it needed to be. So this is such a great plan for eighty-nine cents a month. Or you cannot beat this. You cannot beat this. And I don't, and if they're taking it all the way up to, you know, Dallas and they have the facility up there, that's fantastic. You do not know what the problems are with garbage out there. And if anyone ever wants to know, please come ask me because I will fill you in and show you video that I have personally taken. And this is such a great thing. And, and I really hope this goes off because this would get all this BPO or whatever, this hazardous stuff out of Lago Vista. You don't want to be storing this anywhere because things leak and it gets into your ground and then it gets into your water. And having them remove it completely would be such a fantastic thing for the citizens of Lago. And I don't know if we have to vote on this or what we have to do, but this is an amazing thing. And whoever did this, thanks. Thank you.
All right, is that, it's dark. Is that Kevin Sullivan? Got his hand up?
Yep, that's me, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry about that. I just.
Not a problem. Thank you, sir. Just two quick questions. I, I may have misunderstood the pricing on this. I almost thought I heard the speaker say that, that people would be charged when they, they actually signed up for the service for that particular month. But I'm thinking it's more every citizen gets charged the charge on a monthly basis. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Every citizen pays eighty-nine cents per month.
Okay, perfect. And then my only other question is, I thought I saw on your spreadsheet, weekly option and monthly option. Is there an option to do it every other month and, and, and do it that way until we decide we, we have the need for every month, for example?
There's, we, we've not done that. I'll tell you why. The, the number one cost driver for us is not the collection. It's, it's the disposal of the items that we collect. And we collect about the same amount whether we do it every month or every other month. The, the, the volume of the collected items doesn't really change.
Okay.
It's just all in one month rather than spread out over two months. So in order to keep the, the convenience to the majority of the citizens, we, we like the monthly better.
Got it. Thank you very much. A great presentation. It looks like a wonderful service. Thank you.
So Kevin, just in the update clarification, it's, it'd be eighty-nine cents per household, not per citizen. And then question, Dick, if we went with weekly, would it be eighty-nine cents per week? Or would it still be eighty-nine cents per month?
No, we would, we would upcharge. It would be, it'd still be a monthly charge. It would not be eighty-nine cents per month. It would be a, a larger number, but it would not be eighty-nine cents per week. I would, I would have to do some calculating on that, but I would estimate it would probably be a dollar thirty-five or a dollar fifty, somewhere in there. But I'd have to give you a more firm proposal if you wanted to go that way.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I saw a hand there. Ms. Lucero, Christina.
Hi there. I love the presentation and I love the idea. I just don't know if, it being on everyone is necessarily that good of an idea. I, I don't know if everyone is going to use it. And I know that our utility bills are going up. So that is one concern that I have. So I know with trash and recycling, people can not pay for it. I think it's like five dollars for the cans or something. Is this something that they can opt out of as well?
No, under our program, it would be, everybody would be in the program with the understanding that, you know, everyone could use it every month, but it would more likely that it would just be over the course of the contract that really people would be using it once or twice.
And it's every month for the next three years. Everyone is locked in.
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? All right, well, Dick, and I'm sorry I pronounced your last name wrong to, to start, but thank you very much. And, you know, I'll bring this back up to council and citizens in the future. And once I get feedback, we'll, we'll, we'll be in touch and see which, see if there's something we want to take advantage of or not.
All right, well, we hope you do. And we, we hope we get to partner with you sometime soon in the future.
All right, thank you. And you have a good weekend.
All right, you too.
All right, and just some closing comments. Again, this was just a presentation from one company. I, I came across the, them at the TML conference. I like the idea. So I, I invited him to present just so we could see, you know, what's out there. I'm sure there are other companies that provide the same service. You know, so council, any staff, anybody that's interested can look and see what other, what other companies are out there or, you know, they, other services are out there. This was just something to get the idea out for council and citizens to review. And we'll just go from here and, and we'll see, you know. I don't, I don't know if it's going to be worth twelve dollars a year for every household or not. That's why I'm asking for your feedback. But the only way I know to, to get this out into the public is to bring them, bring somebody in and give a presentation and just get the ball rolling. So I do appreciate y'all allowing me to do that in the future, you know, something like this. If y'all, council citizens, you know, don't hesitate to, to bring something forth if it's something we want to put out in front of the citizens. You know, to see, to gauge interest, this is, this is really the only way I know how to, to get it out to the citizens. So. You know, so thank y'all. And now we will go to our public hearings. Public hearing and possible action. This is first consideration. Agenda item number four, the Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing. Consider ordinance number two zero dash one zero dash zero one dash zero one and ordinance of the city of Lago Vista, Texas to voluntarily annex approximately sixteen point four nine nine three acres of land adjacent and contiguous territory into the incorporated municipal boundaries of the city of Lago Vista, Texas, including the following findings of fact, effective date, a repealer, severability and proper notice and meeting clause. And I open the public hearing at seven forty-eight PM. All right, and number four. Ordinance annexes property that is currently part of the city of Lago Vista ETJ. As reflected on the survey, a portion of the Nature's Point property is already within the city limits. This action would bring in the remaining property that is subject to the development agreement with Lago Property Development LP approved by City Council at the September third, twenty twenty council meeting. So as y'all know, this was part of the development agreement. We enter into that agreement, they would involuntarily ask to be annexed into the city. The agreement was approved in September. And so now they're following up with their end of the development agreement and they're applying for voluntary annexation. Is anybody, is there anybody that would like to add on to that statement? No? All right. Questions, comments from council?
No further comments, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Frank.
When do we adopt the service plan?
Can somebody answer? I don't have that information.
The, the, the process now is that you have to have a service agreement. And I believe that should have been part of the last package. If it wasn't, it certainly needs to come before you because that's part of the process for annexation. You have to have an agreement. I believe it was part of the package that was part of your September third.
Yeah, I got it. I understand. Thank you.
Do we know that for sure?
Yes, sir. Yeah, Mayor, I under, I, I get it. I thought that the service plan would, would be part of the annexation ordinance. But Aaron, as I think from my perspective anyway, correctly stated that we have a development agreement which includes service plan that we previously approved. So I get, but.
Yeah, and I was thinking that myself, but I wasn't extremely confident. I would have had to go back and reference the entire packet to look at that agreement.
It was there.
Yeah, the legislature changed it when they changed the annexation laws. They changed it from a service plan to an actual agreement. And that's why the agreement was part of the development agreement. It was in your package.
All right, anybody else on council have any questions? Comments? All right, does Lago Properties have anything they would like to add as, as the applicant?
No, sir. We appreciate your consideration, though.
All right, thank you. All right, it's a public hearing. So anyone from the public? Yes, Diane.
I have a question. On the exhibit A, where it says the description of area to be an annexed with, with the blank up in the state of Texas and county of Travis and so on. So it's like a pre-not completed document. And so my question is in paragraph two, where it says, we're beginning at a point on the south line of Lixor Drive at the north corner of lot, of lot twenty-eight A of the amended plat of lots twenty-seven. I'm sorry. Am I, am I the only one talking? I keep hearing something. Maybe it's my computer.
Yeah, I think you're actually getting reverb from your own microphone somehow. I don't know how, but it's correct.
Thank you for that, Josh. I'm, I'm a little bit ignorant on the machinations of the machines. So maybe I need to be further away or something. Anyway, lots twenty-seven and twenty-eight of Marshall's Vintage Subdivision, under document blah, blah, blah of the OPR TCT, being the same tract recorded in the name of Diane Chan Yipan. It's referencing my lots under document number blah, 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 and being the northwest corner of the tract from which a one and a half inch iron rod. I'm sorry, I can't read my printout. An iron rod found bears north nineteen degrees thirteen minutes or and thirty-six seconds east, a distance of five point six H feet. What I'm wondering about is why in the description of the area to be annexed, it's referencing a point on my property. Why is it not referencing their most westerly point? Instead of referencing my corners on their annexation, why are not they not referencing their own corners for annexation? I just don't like my, some point of my property being included in their annexation. And I don't know if that, in my properties that we've dealt with over time, that hasn't been the usual. So I'm a little bit confused.
All right, I'll get somebody else to chime in as well. But I, I think because it's a shared point, they're just referencing that it's also a point that's named in a different plat. And I, I could be wrong, but I just know that they're, they're saying that this point also exists on your property. And it's identified in your, in your records as well.
Well, but it doesn't say Austin as beginning at. You know, it's not referenced as a shared, you know, in the, when, in the plating process, there's usually a plating process. there's usually a plating process, and it may say adjacent to, or butted against, you know, there's a, there's several bits of verbiage that can be used. I just haven't heretofore, in my limited experience, seen it referenced as the beginning annexation or the beginning of whatever point in reference to a particular plat or plot, referencing their point of reference as somebody else's, that is somebody else's. So I'm just wondering for clarification.
Their property's not platted, so there is no such point to reference.
Did you say that again, Roy?
Their property's not currently platted, other than that one little piece that's already in the city.
That's why we're using the surveyor's notes. This is one of the pins, that's the starting point for the survey that was taken by the applicant's surveyor. That there's.
Corner of a lot that doesn't exist.
Right.
So.
You understand that, Diane?
Well, I don't understand the phrase, a corner of a lot that doesn't exist, because it obviously exists.
The plat doesn't exist.
If I'm a county perspective, it may not be platted in terms of this city, but the whole of Texas is platted.
No, ma'am, that's not true. It's surveyed, but not necessarily planted.
Right, surveyed.
So they're starting their plat from a, from a point on the survey that's already known and platted. But because theirs is not platted, they don't have anything to reference off of. Right, anyone else? All right, any, anything else from council? All right, well, at this time, I am going to go ahead and close the council, the, I'm sorry, the public hearing at 7:57 PM. And it is up for a, for further discussion by council and a possible decision.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Make a motion that we approve ordinance number 20-10-01-01.
Second. All right, I have the motion and a second from Counsel Robbins. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, hearing none, ordinance passes unanimous.
Thank you, council.
Yes, and we shall go to, then to item number five. The Lago Vista City Council is holding a public hearing. Consider a conditional use permit application pursuant to section 17 of chapter 14 of the Lago Vista Code of Ordinances to allow for the addition of a carport that otherwise exceeds the maximum height and encroaches into the required minimum side yard setback at 21643 High Drive, Country Club Estates, section eight, lot 1570. Primary basis for this application is that the ordinances do not allow for a carport to be permitted for a single family residence outside of the R1M, which is the manufactured home and industrialized housing zoning district, without a conditional use permit approval. Of a less significant nature is the fact that the carport is marginally higher than specified in the ordinance, and it is intended, it is intended to provide shade and shelter for vehicles parked on an existing driveway. While the driveway itself is allowed in the side yard setback, the restructure would represent a minor encroachment. We have gotten some updates, some pictures and stuff that was sent to us just recently. The applicant is a football coach for the high school here in Lago Vista, and his boys are playing football, so he is not with us tonight, but he did send us some information to pass on in his absence. The applicant asserts that the structure is largely hidden from the public right of way. Because of the severe topography, the existing grade elevation at the location of the carport is significantly lower than the grade elevation of the street. While the planning and zoning commission felt reasonably sure that the upper portion of the structure might be visible from the street, they were equally confident that whatever might be seen, might be stored beneath it would not be seen as particularly prominent. There is a significant amount of existing vegetation along an existing fence that would screen a grade level view of the carport from the neighboring property to the west. Moreover, that property owner, who would be most impacted by an approval, submitted written support of the application. As a result, the P and Z unanimously recommended approval at the regular meeting on September 10, 2020. I am opening the public hearing at 8:01 PM. And Roy, I have a first question. With the information that was provided by the applicant, are, are these still an issue? The 18 feet, 2 inches that was measured to the height, that was not, from what I understand, this was not from the highest point on the property, but from the, from the bottom of the slab on the downhill side, and so that the, from the highest point, it's actually like only about 13 feet.
The ordinance for accessory buildings does not refer to the high point of the lot, so it's still technically 18 foot two, because that's what, what it is.
Okay.
Right, but what he pointed out wasn't clear until I saw the pictures. I mean, his drawings were real strange because they were labeled wrong, and you know, and we never really understood them, but when he showed the pictures that he showed of, you know, where he put the, the little circles where he was gonna, you know, pour the footings, now, now it made sense. From the street, it's gonna look like it's 13 foot two inches tall, not 18 foot two, but you know, it's that way because, you know, he was gonna put the footings beyond the driveway instead of on the driveway.
All right, and as far as the, the side yard setback encroachment, I didn't see anything that showed how much encroachment.
It, it varies, you know, because it's not straight in relation to the property line. There's an angle there. It's in the staff report, I think, I think it was a minimum of, of at least five feet to as, as much as seven, depending on, you know, he, he didn't really give an accurate dimension until today, but, and that's the, that's the, the picture he showed was the one that's furthest away from the property line. You'll see his original drawing with his site plan. It shows it is, the driveway is being five feet away from the property line at one point, and, and three feet at another point. He'll be a, you know, a little bit more than that because he's going beyond the driveway. So part of the inability to give you an exact number had to do with the inability to know what the setback was on the other side of the house. Our ordinance requires for a minimum of five, and, and, but a cumulative of 15. We think the other side is probably 10 feet, but we're not absolutely sure. You know, there's no, there's no other house there, it's a vacant lot, that sort of things. Didn't, didn't see the property lines, that sort of thing. We think it's 10, but we, you know, it predates our digital plan, so we don't have a, a form survey or anything like that to be absolutely sure.
Okay. So council, questions, comments? Yes, Dick?
Mr. Mayor, I went by and looked at this location and look at where he's talking about putting the carport, and I think the remarks that are in there are correct. It's gonna be barely visible from the road, and the things that are put under it, because of the topography and because of the vegetation around the area are hardly going to be noticeable. This seemed like a very reasonable request to me.
Right, yeah, and that one neighbor did actually put in his response, and it was in favor, he did support it, so.
Yeah.
Anybody?
And Mr. Mayor, that, that was the conclusion that P and Z came up with also, that it wasn't gonna be very visible either, anyway. Because of the, yeah.
All right. Anybody else on council? All right, this is a public hearing, so anybody from the public, questions, comments? Yes, Darcy?
I saw this at the P and Z meeting, and they have a pretty good plan, I think, I don't think they're gonna do any harm to that area. They, they seem pretty responsible and have it planned out and, you know, so I, I think you guys should, can probably consider it, but thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? All right, well, based on the arguments on a hearing, I'm gonna go ahead and close this public hearing as well. I'll close it at 8:06 PM, and it is now open for further discussion and possible decision.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit.
Second.
All right, I have the motion and a second by Dave Williams. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Hearing none, permit passes unanimous. All right. Number six. Possible action, first consideration, number six, declaration of council place to vacancy and discussion, consideration and possible appointment of person to fill vacancy for remainder of said term in accordance with city charter. Section 3.07 and 3.09. Let me find my paperwork here, there it is. Bear with me for just a second. All right. Gotta make, make sure I've got all my paperwork here for. I need a second monitor so I don't have to do all this. All right, so.
I'll second.
Counselor, Counselor Barthol tendered his resignation from council place two via email on the evening of September 20, 2020 to the city secretary. The resignation is effective as of the time accepted by the city secretary as one of the two appropriate authorities, according to Texas Election Code 201.023. The city secretary forwarded the email to the mayor, city manager, and city attorney at 5:46 AM on September 21, 2020, convincing acceptance of the resignation, and therefore it is effective as of September 21, 2020. City Charter, section 3.07, requires that the council declare the office vacant at the next regular council meeting and initiate action to fill the vacancy in accordance with section 3.09. Under this section, the council must appoint someone who meets the qualifications for office specified in state law and city charter within 30 days of declaring the vacancy, and thus an appointment is required on or before October 30, 2020. Charter, section 3.09, also specifies that all persons holding office by appointment shall serve only until an election is held to fill that position, and the person elected to that position is seated. Counselor Barthol was serving a two-year term that began with his election November of 2018. The term will expire with the November 2020 election, when a new council member is sworn, is sworn in. The Texas Constitution provides that an officer continues to perform the duties of office until his or her successor is duly qualified, for example, appointed and sworn in. Texas Constitution, article 1617 dot, therefore, 17, there, I'm sorry, that's a period, not a dot. Section 17, therefore, Counselor Barthol may continue to participate in council meetings until an appointee is sworn in. Aaron, I have a clarification on this here. It states the term will expire with the November 2020 election, when a new council member is sworn in.
That's right.
If I'm not mistaken, there's a high potential for a runoff. With a runoff, the term would not expire until the runoff of election, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure, so November 2020 is not necessarily the deadline.
Right, that's just the election.
For expiration, but.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so if, if approved, the person will serve as council member for place two until a new council member is elected and duly qualifies. This could be for a short period, or it could be for several months if the election results require a runoff. Denied, Counselor Barthol continue to serve as a holdover until his term ends and the newly elected takes office. All right, so if you were with us at the beginning at 6 PM, you know, we took this item up for discussion in executive session. What do I do with my paperwork again? I have my list of names written down here. Well, oh, there it is. All right, so there was no formal application process required. It was any interested party could just contact me and let me know they were interested. We had the following citizens send in their information. Steve Schill, Eric Carpenter, Mark Evert, Chip Hamilton, Jim Christie, Paul Roberts, Christina Lucero, Paul Prince, and Kevin Sullivan. We decided not to take any current candidates under consideration at this time. As doing so, which we, we believe would, would have the appearance of showing favoritism to any candidate, and we did not believe that was fair to all the candidates nor to the public for considering somebody that's a candidate at this time. So Paul Prince and Kevin Sullivan were considered, but we're, we're, we're accepted your, your interest, and I appreciate that, but we're not looking at any candidates at this time. So out of the remaining seven, at this time, I would like to make the motion, I would like to nominate Paul Roberts for the position to fill the vacancy of place two.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, I see a hand from the, from the audience. Yes, Mr. Durbin? I should, I should have brought you in before I made the motion, but go ahead. I should I should have brought you in before I made the motion, but go ahead at this time.
That's what I thought I got it in it, but um, uh, you had mentioned uh, something about a runoff. But uh, the city charter section three oh one second paragraph states, the candidate who receives the largest number of votes for a particular office shall be declared elected for that office. Uh, does not seem to provide for any runoff provision.
Alright, maybe I've been misinformed, but uh.
Hang on, Mr. Mayor, I'll I'll pull it up. The way that our charter reads the and I don't have it memorized verbatim, so I want to look at it and tell you because it does, our charter does require that um, the uh, elected be elected by plurality, um, which would require that they receive more than fifty percent of the votes, which would then in a in a uh, race with more than two candidates, there's the potential for uh, no one to get fifty percent, more than fifty percent, uh, which would mean that you could have the option for the issue of a runoff. Uh, I thought it was three point oh two.
I understand what where runoffs usually come in. My my uh, statement was based, and I read you the section of the uh, charter, I read it verbatim. The candidate who receives the largest number of votes for a particular office shall be declared elected for that office. So either you have a conflict in your in the charter somewhere, but that is in the second paragraph under the number selection in term of office for um, city council candidates.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to that we take a moment to look at that and we can bring that issue back before you. It's not an item that was specifically up for discussion. It's not on the agenda this evening. But we can certainly address it um, at the appropriate time. I believe there's a motion on the table with regard to appointment. Um, so focus on that at this moment so that we don't get outside of what's on the agenda for the council meeting this evening, but I can certainly address the issue.
I agree.
We're making a motion.
The the the. The the appointment either way does not uh, affect the election. It's just the length of term that may be.
Whether it's for a couple of weeks or a bunch of months is a big difference, but I agree, we uh, appoint whoever you want.
Kevin, did you have any comments?
Yes.
Point of order. Point of order.
Yes, point of orders.
Order.
There's a motion and it's second on the table. Discussion, I believe, should be between the council.
That is correct, however, I failed to uh, I failed to allow comments to the public prior to my motion. So if I need to withdraw my motion at the time and go back, then I will, but if I'm allowed, Aaron can clarify, if I'm allowed to go ahead and allow the citizens to comment at this time, we'll just proceed. Um, but I do have to allow opportunity for them to comment.
That's right.
Do I need to withdraw my motion, or can we just proceed during further discussion?
Um, Mr. Mayor, you you can proceed if you wish. Um, technical technically, it would be pro forma to withdraw your motion, allow the comments to take place. It looks like there are a few hands raised, so you may get some additional public comment. And you're exactly correct, we do have to allow for public comment on every item that's on the agenda.
Okay, so before I proceed, I will go ahead and withdraw um, my motion at this time.
And I'll withdraw my second.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so Kevin, go ahead. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my understanding is our charter says a plurality, which is is not a majority, it's the most votes. And I'll just give one example. If you remember in twenty sixteen, Mayor, uh, Mr. Smith was in election with three people and he got the most votes, but he did not get a majority and he was uh, he was elected. Um, it, yeah, so, and in fact, Mr. Mayor, if you remember, um, you and I and and Mr. Panter ran in fifteen and I don't know that you got fifty percent, but you were elected. So I do believe it's simply a plurality, not a majority. And the only way that we would end up with a runoff is if two people in place two, the two top vote getters got the same amount of votes. Thank you very much.
And I had what I had thought, I kind of questioned that myself because I knew of the three-person race, but I couldn't remember what the percentages were, so I didn't know, but yes, thank you. Alright, Christina, you're recognized. Excuse me.
Thank you. Um, I was wondering how this was chosen. Um, how was this decision made? Uh, because I remember the the last election, um, I think forty-nine percent of the citizens voted for me, so they felt that I would be a good person up there. So I'm just wondering how Paul Roberts got slid in. Thank you.
All the candidates were discussed in the executive session and this is my nomination. They can vote whether they, you know, approve or not, and if Paul Roberts is not agreed to, then we go on to somebody else to make a nomination. That's how the process works.
So. Backyard meeting.
There was, there was no vote on any of the candidates in executive session.
That's correct. That is not, that is correct. That is not allowed.
We we just discussed all the candidates because, you know, a few of them, uh, we weren't familiar with the names, so we had to ask questions on uh, on some of the candidates to try to get more familiar with some of the names that were out there. But there was no vote during executive session.
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Prince. Paul, yeah, the floor.
Yeah, so first, just to clarify, uh, Mr. Mayor, I I did send you that note. My question had been uh, would any of the existing candidates be appropriate to run? Uh, and you answered me as you just did in the meeting that, uh, you know, you felt that it was inappropriate. You you didn't want to show favoritism. So I I actually had not expected you to even consider me as a candidate for this, so I guess I'll I'll withdraw my name, but it may not matter at this point. So my question, though, is kind of sort of along the lines of Christina. I I think it would be appropriate to understand what criteria would be applied in, you know, choosing the person. I mean, uh, she implicitly said, uh, you know, her previous history of having had a significant number of citizens voted for her could have been a criteria that you could have used. Uh, I just think, even though this executive session, you know, not going into specific people, uh, it seems like it might be useful to understand what the criteria or thinking is behind picking anybody, whether it's Paul Roberts or Christina or Jim Christie or whoever's on the list. Thank you.
Right, and and there is no, there is no um, no formal process, there's no application process. There are, you know, other than meeting qualifications, the that's, you know, for anybody running for office, uh, there is no criteria. For selection, yes.
Mr. Mayor, you may want to uh, provide for the citizens, provide the citizens kind of your rationale of why you nominated that person. It it it, that may provide some information that they're looking for. What was the, what is your rationale for nominating Mr. Roberts?
Okay. But I'll do that in a little bit. Thank you. Yeah, there is no formal outline criteria anywhere or application process. They just have to meet the uh, eligibility. So. Yes, Mr. Durbin.
Just a quick question, and that is you, although there was apparently no vote in executive session, it was discussed in executive session. I don't understand why this would even be discussed in executive session.
We had some questions that we wanted to discuss. That we didn't feel like necessarily would be appropriate in open session. So we had advice for our our for our legal advice. And uh, so we felt it was best to ask those questions in executive session from our from our attorney.
You you felt that some candidates were precluded legally?
No, it was more of the uh, process and how they're, you know, whether what the qualifications were and and the process and.
I again, I I think I think that's an improper discussion in in uh, executive session. I don't know why you couldn't debate that out here on the floor.
Well, we can. We're in open session now.
The cow's out of the barn, Ed. Um, y'all have already talked about it, but that's 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 fine. That's the explanation. I'll 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 accept that as your explanation. Thank you.
Yeah, we we.
As you're fully aware, uh, receiving legal advice from your attorney uh, is an appropriate discussion for executive session.
Well, it is, it is, but discussing the various candidates is, there's no legal advice required unless you're trying to eliminate one on a legal basis. And make them, you know, if somebody's not qualified uh, for a legal reason, then then they should be able to discuss that with you. I I agree. But if it's just a discussion of the candidates, how is that seeking legal advice?
We were not, we were not, we were not discussing the uh, the candidates. We were discussing the procedure of the candidates and I was about to make a nomination and start the discussions uh, with council. I had made a nomination and gotten a second and we were going to discuss it from there. And if council was not in agreement, then we could consider uh, their motion and go from there. But I was about to start the discussion and then realized I had not opened it up for public comments, so.
I I appreciate, I appreciate that, but it also sounds like y'all discussed the various candidates in executive session. If if that's not what you did, then I would, I would need to be more uh, you know, precise with the wording, uh, because that's kind of what it sounded like you did.
Okay.
And I don't know what the procedure of the candidate is, but.
Yes, Christina.
Just because it wasn't personnel and it wasn't real estate and it wasn't uh, legal action, you know, lawsuits or anything. So that's just why I wondered why everything was behind closed doors and and already decided.
Well, we're allowed to talk about any agenda item that we would like to get attorney advice on.
Mark Everett, hands up.
Diane.
You're muted.
Can't hear you.
Here we go. Um, I just want to see that this seems to be getting more and more uh, confusing because I'm hearing, I'm hearing that um, that you, Mr. Mayor, you said that you were nominating it and it was a second and we were going to have a discussion, but as in my limited experience here on the council, usually a nomination and then a second leads to a vote. And uh, so I didn't see that there was going to be, in my anticipation, I did not see that there was going to be much discussion. Also confusing is the reference with regard to legal counsel in executive session. Prior to that, several sentences prior to that, I believe you or somebody, I think it was you, said that with the other, and you referenced the other seven uh, persons that were interested. There were some that we didn't know very much about and had some questions. That indicated to me that in that executive meeting, there were some questions that were asked relevant to the individuals about, in reference to, about the individuals. And that's what I'm seeing, those kind of things with the other uh, attendees tonight are things that could just as well have happened in open session. So it's a little bit confusing and convoluted here.
Right.
Mark, Mark Everett, hands up.
So um, as far as the motion, I withdrew my motion so that we could go back and have the public comments, but yeah.
I understand. I was referring to it as it happened in that context.
Alright, hold on, Mark. David.
The bulk of our discussion in executive session was to determine whether each candidate qualified. Uh, you know, because we had just gotten the list earlier and we wanted to make sure we had seven qualified people. We also wanted to make sure that we, how we felt about Kevin and Paul being candidates that are currently running, if that would skew the election and whether that was right or wrong. So I mean, the bulk of our discussion was mainly trying to figure out how we felt about a candidate running for the position before the election.
Yeah, it was, it was basically about procedure, uh, how we proceed and so I don't know, my advice was to come out here to open session and make a nomination and go from there. And so that's what I had done and instead of just sitting here and going down each list of names and it was, you start with a nomination and you go from there. I don't know why the what the purpose of bringing up every single person's name was and discussing them. So to me, somebody should make a nomination and then we discuss that nomination. And if that nomination is not approved, then we go to the next nomination, or we don't. But. Mark.
Yes, this, mine's Mark Everett and I've one of the candidates that submitted my name to that and my recommendation would be that uh, any any candidates who are present at the meeting, you know, should have a little bit of a chance to introduce themselves, why they're interested in the position and uh, a little bit of background on them. And that's really all I have to say.
Alright, thank you. Chalene.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to second what Mr. Everett just said. I think that's a great idea. Um, but I was wondering, just to follow up on something that Mr. Williams, uh, Counselor Williams just mentioned. Um, maybe you could share with us what some of those, um, Counselor Williams mentioned that you all uh, discuss a little bit about whether or not each person was qualified um, or met the criteria to to step into this temporary role. And then maybe you could just share with the rest of us what that criteria that you discussed was.
Uh, let's see, I'd have to bring that up in the charter of the eligibility. That's not in our packet, is it? It's the same that's in your camp, in your election packet.
Yes, I I've got it, but I'm just wondering for the folks that may not have that packet, if if you might be able to share that so that um, other folks uh, could be um, in the loop. Sure.
Mayor, I can deliver that again if you need me to.
Yes, so I don't have to go and search for it, if you don't mind, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, section three point oh two, back to where Judge Durbin was at earlier. These qual, all candidates for city elective office shall meet the requirements for office prescribed by state law, be a registered voter residing in the city for at least one year prior to the date of election, be at least twenty-one years of age by the date of election, hold no other public elected public office if elected, not be a city employee, not be in financial rears to the city for any reason, and not file for more than one office per election.
Alright. Yes, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I I like, Mr. Prince would like to say that when I sent mine in, I was very clear, I did not feel it was appropriate that the council consider current candidates. But if you were going to, I wanted my name in there, but I did not think it was appropriate and I'm glad you guys went that path. I, my recommendation was is that you go uh, check with some of the recent council members who are still living in town to see if they'd be willing to fill in for a couple of meetings, Dale Mitchell, Ron Smith, Stephanie Smith, Suzanne Bland, Mark Tippett, that kind of thing. Um, so anyway, I I just wanted people to know, I did not think it was appropriate that candidates be uh, possible selections. Thank you.
Right. Yeah. I just included everybody that contacted me on the list, so. Except for Mark Tippett. Mark Tippett did call and wanted to know. Except for Mark Tippett. Mark Tippett did call and wanted to know if he was the only one, but I told, I advised him he was not the only one, and he said, oh, want to be considered. So I did not include Mark Tippett on the list, but. Yes, Arch.
Yes, Mayor. I had to make sure that my microphone was on. I think that we need to, before we even make a selection for someone to fill the, the open position, I think we need to look at the application of the rule that has to do with winning by a plurality. Because my understanding of winning by a plurality means that if there are three or more people that are in the elective office competition, that if someone doesn't win by a clear majority in that situation in the plurality, it means that the top two people run off. Let me just quote what the election code that we have in our charter, which is section 5.04. Says candidates of the council shall file for a specific office designated by place, number, or mayor. And the mayor and the council member for each place should be elected by a plurality vote. In the event no candidate or officer receives the plurality of the votes cast for that office in the general or special election, the council shall upon completion of the official canvas, order a runoff election among the candidates who tie for the highest number of votes. The runoff election shall be held on the third Saturday following the canvas of the vote in the general or special election. So there, there's no case that I've ever heard of where a plurality vote was taken and you have two people that tie with exactly the same number. Now, the fact that there was a plurality, the fact that there was, there were races in the past involving more than two people does not mean that the plurality rule was applied correctly. Because the way that I've always seen it is plurality means that you have more than two people running and the, the person that, that is the winner or the, the person that is elected is that person that on that first vote wins by a clear majority of greater than 50%. If that's not the case, then the, the next two people, then the two top people that receive the majority of, or the, the, I shouldn't say the majority, but the people that, that receive the, the two highest number, those people are, are able to run off. Because when you have three people running, it's almost impossible for anybody to get 51% of the vote. It does, it can happen if somebody's particularly popular. But I believe in the, in the case that we have before us, before us, it's going to be very difficult for anyone to receive a clear majority vote, which is trumped the plurality.
All right, thank you. Yes, Diane.
Um, one more, one more, one more input here on this because I think, I feel like it's being overcomplicated because that if, we would not have a need for the word plurality, plurality to be in the, the context if the meaning was to be a clear more than 50% win, regardless of however many. If the meaning was a clear over 50%, then that could be stated very clearly. They're using the word plurality for a reason. And the basic definition of a plurality, a plurality vote in the United States describes the circumstances when a candidate or proposition pulls more votes than any other, but does not receive more than half of all votes cast. That's the reason for using the word plurality instead of more than 50%. I don't think it's, it's needs to be complicated.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We're getting beyond the scope of what's on our agenda.
Yeah, I realize that.
So I want to bring us back, sir.
Okay. Yes, Darcy.
Hi, I was just wondering, because I'm going back to why we're right here with Paul Roberts and Christine and the other couple of people who signed up for this. What was the cutoff time that someone had to have their name into your hat to get into this, going to get set on city council for the next whatever? And if we got a runoff and nothing happens and something happens and the BS down, six months down the road, now we have someone like you were getting Paul Roberts, which I thought Paul Roberts would be great. But now you have Paul Roberts maybe sitting on the city council for this next six months making decisions where he never actually ran. He was appointed this position. So my point is, let's get back to how long was the cutoff time that someone could throw their hat into this ring and be considered for this position?
So at the last council meeting, we made the announcement that you had until the, till this council meeting to contact me with your interest. So the cutoff would have been at six o'clock tonight. All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All right. Well, at this time, I am going to make an, a motion that we postpone the selection of the, of a person until the next council meeting so that we can make sure we have the timeframe and, and everything. Questions concerning the actual timeframe that they may serve more clearly defined going into the nomination. That's, my motion is to delay the nomination until our next meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so I have a motion and I have a second from Mr. Weatherly. Is there any other discussion, comments? Darcy, we are done, we're done with citizen comments at this time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I just, I, this was probably for Erin. I just had a question for her. It, what, what would make like when they're voting and they have to have all the votes on the council, isn't that a quorum or some kind of crazy something? But how do they get a vote now going forward? Thank you.
All right, so Darcy, you were not recognized. I, I'd, I'd advise you that we were done with citizen comments, so. So any further discussion from council? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
All right. The motion to delay the decision till next month or to the next meeting passes five to one. All right.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to request a break for a little bit. Thank you.
All right, what time is it? 8:43. We will recess until 8:50. That gives everybody seven minutes to go to the restroom.
Mr. Mayor, Aaron, can we go back to that last subject or is it postponed for, till the next meeting?
I will, I will get a clarification on that once, once we go back into session. We're on recess right now.
Okay, I'll ask.
Typically, if Mayor and Aaron's listening, typically if the council passes something, they can reconsider.
All right, you have to have a motion to reconsider.
I don't want to discuss that until we go back. Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to discuss it until we go, until everybody's back in open session.
Mayor, when we go back to, into open session, I'd like to make a statement, please.
All right. Who's been all the eating? I hear, I hear crunching.
I don't know who's doing it. I just want some of it.
That was me looking for my chopstick.
No.
Caller four is the only one with an open mic at the time.
I do, it actually wasn't somebody eating. I just knew Josh said he had pecans that he was snacking on, so.
Beautiful moonrise earlier.
All right, we've gone past our 8:50 recess. But I don't know if I have all my council members back.
I'm on.
Dave's there.
I'm here.
Okay, so Dick, Dave, Tim, Arch, and Frank. All right, all council members are here. All right, we returned from recess, 8:52 PM. All right.
Mr. Moon.
Yes, Tim.
Would like to make a motion to reconsider our last agenda item, please.
Okay, there's a motion. Yeah, I've got some hands up. Do I have a second on that or? All right, I think half the people are trying to talk to me with no sound on. So Frank, yes.
Any person that voted against the motion, make the motion to reconsider.
I think you're right. I think you're right.
I would, if he, if he can't, I'll move.
Aaron, can you invite, I don't have the, I don't have the full Roberts rules with me.
I have to hit it up here. That's a, I can't remember. Just a second.
Motion to reconsider may only be made by a member who previously voted in the majority for the item. Must be made during the same meeting or at the very next meeting. So no, person who voted in the minority cannot reconsider, make a motion to reconsider. I found it.
I withdraw.
All right. No, it wasn't seconded, so. All right, yes, Frank.
Move to reconsider item number six.
Yes, Arch.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to read to you a part of the rules of procedure under 3.9, courtesy the quorum in order. Yes?
Okay.
Did you stop me for a, did you stop me for a reason?
Well, I've got a, I've got a motion. I was looking, before we go into further discussion, I need to see if I have a, a motion, I mean, a second. I didn't get a second on Tim's. Frank's made a motion. I'm looking for a second. If not. Okay, so no second, so the motion dies. Yes, Arch.
Okay, what I would like to do is to read a portion of our. Okay, what I would like to do is to read a portion of our rules of procedure, section 3.9 courtesy decorum in order. Number three, that subsection three, improper reference prohibited. It says, "Every person desiring to speak shall address the entire council and shall not single out a member of the council, the audience, or a staff member. Speakers shall confine themselves to the question under debate, avoiding all personal attacks in the, in the course language." So, when people are thinking on any agenda item, they may reference the council as a whole, may not question somebody on staff or, or our legal. Lee, or. That's prohibited.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I can proceed to, I'm out, I found my piece of paper now. Put this back up there.
Number seven.
Yeah. I'm missing a page, I'm in the community, there it is. It goes back over there. All right, number seven. All right, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding an ordinance of the City Council of Lago Vista, Texas amending Article 3.100 of Chapter 3 to amend various provisions related to construction activity that is regulated by the city. All right, so number seven. Okay, the proposed ordinance amendment originates from discussions among the members of the Building and Standards Commission dating back to the regular meeting of July 9th, 2019. Additional discussion in consecutive monthly meetings resulted in a draft ordinance that they recommended for adoption at their regular meeting on September 10th, 2019. A list of the many areas addressed is included if the impact is denied in the impacted denied section below. Although not part of the actual ordinance amendment, a significant amount of the discussion focused on the need for more effective enforcement methods. In addition to introducing financial consequences for violations without the delay of a civil penalty imposed by court, it was understood that improved documentation of violations also needed. This need was particularly significant as it relates to violations that often or primarily occur after hours or on weekends when the Development Services Department staff is not available. As such, the IT department, with funding by the Development Services Department of a one-time expense imposed by our website host, collaborated with our code enforcement staff and the Lago Vista PD to develop an online complaint form. In addition to providing a means by which the public can document a violation, it automatically generates an email that is instantly delivered to all interested parties, including the police dispatcher. They have generously offered to investigate and provide documentation of violations for our use outside of normal business hours. This type of cooperation from a police force to assist code enforcement efforts is unprecedented in my experience, and the police chief deserves recognition for it. After considerable effort, the online complaint form is now fully functional. Although, let's see. Among other advantages, it saves considerable staff time compared to multiple phone messages, emails lacking that. The online form prompts the user to provide the critical information we need without additional effort. By this point in time, however, the new erosion control provisions were nearing completion. Because this section contains reference to those requirements, we waited until they were adopted before presenting this amendment for your consideration. Yeah, we just, we just updated the erosion and drainage provisions last month. So, now we are being presented with this. If approved, a lack of consideration exhibited by some contractors and subcontractors that have created chronic disturbances in established neighborhoods and negatively impacted the rights of nearby property owners would now be regulated and/or prohibited. Impact if denied, regulations involving current problems, areas that include debris, use of vacant property, parking within, and obstruction of residential streets, unwarranted noise, extended activity hours, excessive project duration, the lack of temporary sanitation facilities, and limited enforcement measures will remain unchanged. So, as you can tell, this is something that has been considered and looked at for quite some time now with our double-digit growth in residential construction for the last couple of years. We've had some, had some problems that we've been trying to address. And so we're at this point now, the construction activity, there's a summary here of construction activity regulations. This would require update field permit documentation requirements. Timeliness of completion, all extensions required by state statutes are accommodated. There are, there would now be numerous financial incentives to encourage the prompt execution of an approved permit application and the completion of the work it approves. Clarify permissible construction hours and days as restricting all activity, not just demolition, point of foundations, and the use of power tools, which are addressed in the noise ordinance. Require prior approval and documentation of the owner's permission to use adjacent or nearby property for any purpose. Require portable sanitary facilities, that's toilets and water, when personnel are consistently present until other permanent facilities are available for their use. It would restrict construction personnel parking to one side of residential streets only. It would require prior approval for construction project-related street obstructions. Require prior approval based on small lots or steep loads, steep slopes for anything other than a 40 cubic yard roll-off dumpster with alternative provisions requiring a cover or lid which shall be secured after hours. Added reference to new temporary and permanent erosion control requirements and improved enforcement, violation inspections or documentation will, will result in a reinspection fee assessment, requiring payment prior to issuance of ACO. All right, anybody from staff care to add to this at all? Roy, do you have anything else to add to this?
No, sir.
All right, council, questions, comments? Yes, Dick?
You know, this, this answers a whole bunch of things that have been going on that just have not been the way things should be done in our community. The contractors are pretty good about taking care of things, but every once in a while, you have one that just gets totally out of line. And this gives us the authority, a way to take care of those situations so that we can help our citizens, our neighborhoods be a safer, quieter, more appropriate place to live. I also have support for this. Yeah, on Lakeside, I get a lot of complaints about that exactly. They're putting up plywood, slap together four sides of a plywood, dump it in there, and people come from everywhere to dump it, and it sprays all over, so I would appreciate, I think this is a good thing.
Yes, we have, quite often, especially when we get storms, wind will blow trash out, water washes stuff down the roads and into people's yards. I know we've got silt fence that are required and trash bins that are required, but there's always seems to be some kind of loophole, or, I don't know, some kind of activity that allows them to, I don't, not, not necessarily comply with what we've had in place in the past. And so, you know, in order to keep our neighborhoods as beautiful as possible, while still allowing construction to take place, we've definitely had to address all these issues and anything we can do to, I think is a good thing, and. Yes, Arch?
Yes, Mayor, I, I think I would like to be able to acknowledge the work that went into this ordinance. First of all, I'm very thankful that it was being, that, that it was undertaken by Roy. I know it took a lot of work on his part. The Building and Standards Commission was responsible for a lot of the suggestions that went into this ordinance. The one that I'm particularly glad to see happen is that we're going to require the use of roll-offs. And that, you know, that addresses the, the notion that people are not going to be constructing these little cribs or dens or whatever they're called, that often overflow and the stuff ends up in people's yards affecting neighbors and things of that nature. We've had a lot of complaints over the years about that particular thing. So I'm very thankful for the, the work that Roy has done, and this is a very good move forward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on council? All right. David, is your hand up, or you, oh. Okay, I can see a giant pen coming at my face, but.
No, I'm good.
Okay, anybody from the audience that would like to comment? Yes, Paul Prince?
Yeah, thanks, and as Mr. Dabla pointed out, Building and Standards Commission, which I am a member of, did a lot of work on it, and I'm the secretary, so I wrote a lot of minutes on it, so I remember it very well, and I'm very happy to see it here, and certainly encourage you guys to approve it, sounds like that's the sentiment anyway. The, the one question that I do have, I was glad to see and hear that the new tool, which we had discussed, and Roy actually, I think, was the one who thought of it, the new online tool is available, but that's news to me, and I'm kind of an insider because I'm a building and standards guy. Was that actually, was there any public announcement of that tool being available? Just, and, and before that question gets answered, let me also say this. I don't know if you guys have seen it, but there's a, there's a kind of a lynch mob discussion going on on Nextdoor right now around Braun Homes specifically, and how terrible they are on a lot of the things we're talking about here. So, you know, I, I think that's, you know, our biggest builder and people are going crazy. So I think getting this out there and starting to enforce is, is huge, and, and we should definitely do it. But then my question about the tool, if it's available now, has it already been announced somehow that people know about it? Because I, I didn't know about it.
I don't know if we actually addressed it specifically, but when we did the rollout for the app, the, the mobile app that's on your phone, it is the, it is the same application. And I know we referenced that process and said that it was, you know, it was the same as the online, and I don't know if we specifically rolled it out as on the website, we just kind of piggybacked it onto the application because we used the same, the same form.
Yeah, I think there was a little news flash at the bottom, but Mr. Prince is not wrong, we, we need people to use it more. You know?
All right, Josh, did you have something?
Mayor, I was gonna second what you were saying, and then Roy, you know, our goal is to try and drive traffic here. So, in getting it up and trying to test it out, our team's been working on this for a while to try and get all the information together. You were spot on, we actually had the app function up first, and then we were working on the online page to get that submission up and going. We, we had to tie those in together, so the goal is push as much traffic into those systems as possible so that we can hopefully increase efficiency.
All right, Arch?
Yes, Mayor, I think the, the references being made here, without really calling it out, is the, the part of our system that says submit report. That is a tool that I learned about at the last TML conference. It's used by a lot of cities where they are able to do code violation reporting, and that is a hugely valuable tool that we've added to our arsenal. So I hope that people that see, or they believe they are seeing code violations to submit this report, which enables them to take a picture of the violation that they think they're seeing, and, and then our, our people, our code enforcement people will then take over from that point. So, very nice and very easy tool to use. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else? Anybody from the audience? All right. If I have no further comments, this is open for possible action.
Mr. Mayor? I move that we take action on the ordinance of the City Council, Texas amending Article 3.100 of Chapter 3 to amend various provisions related to construction activity that is regulated by the city. Okay.
Right. I have a motion and a second by David Williams. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Aye.
All right, hearing none, motion carries unanimously. All right, we go to number eight. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding selecting an engineering consultant for geotechnical engineering testing and inspection services for the city of Lago Vista and authorize city manager to negotiate and execute a contract price, scope of work in any contract amendments or extensions. All right, on July 23rd of this year, the council issued a request for qualifications to select an engineering firm to provide geotechnical engineering testing and inspection services for the city. Five statements of qualifications were received by the August 10th. The RFQ was advertised and reviewed according to Texas Local Code 2254 and 2269. City received five statements, staff reviewed their submittal, and determined that TSIT Engineering and Consulting is the most qualified for what the city asks. The recommended firm has performed similar work for other similar projects in our city. The SOQs were received from areas, geoprofessionals, ETL engineers and consultants, TSIT Engineering and Consulting, Fugaro USA Land, and TerraCon Consultants. The city, as part of the many ongoing CIP projects, needs geotechnical engineering testing and inspection services. Typically, these services require the oversight of a Texas licensed professional engineer. And as such, they are selected first based on the qualifications, then a price is agreed upon. If selected, excuse me, I got the headgups. If selected, the city will sign a contract and issue task orders to the consultant for individual projects after agreeing on a task order scope and cost. Typically, such contracts last for a period of two years and can be amended for three additional years. Council has the option to select staff-recommended consultant, select another consultant from the list, or reissue the RFQ. All right, if approved, city will start the process of establishing a scope of work in processing a contract. If denied, the city will not start the process and will look for council direction for procurement of such services. Josh, could you provide everybody with a little more detail on, on these geotechnical services and how they are funded, and?
Yes, sir, thanks, Mayor. So, one of the things about bringing this contract to council is so that we can create a process, it could be a short-term process, it could be a longer-term process. Here, we're talking about potentially a two-year agreement that would. Here we're talking about potentially a two-year agreement that would allow the city to enter into a contract with a firm. And then that firm would provide their geotechnical engineering services for projects that come up. So what it looks like for us is instead of bringing a, bringing in a different firm or advertising for a firm every time, we go through the advertising process now, we have someone that we recommend back to council. Council can select any firm that we will then go into an agreement with, into a contract, and then we'll utilize that firm for these projects. So when we look at FY21 and we look at projects that require geotechnical services, there's already a budget for each of those projects. If you look at the CIP program, if you look at a, at a project, for example, you're going to see survey, geotechnical, engineering design, bidding, construction administration, and construction. Typically, that's how each project is broken down for the cost factors. For the geotechnical, for example, if you look at, look at the water treatment plant, one raw water intake upgrade for FY21, you might not have anything for FY22, you have $5,000 on geotechnical. So each project will have that. If council allows us to enter into this contract, then we would use the firm selected for each of those projects. And then when that period ends, then we would bring it back to council. Contracts would still come in to council for us to consider, but we would have a firm that we would deal with based on the RFQ process.
All right, is there a, is there a cap on the number of, of jobs that they consider or dollar amount or?
Mayor, there's not a cap. The council could place any type of cap on the overall contract. Council could say that we're going, only going to go into a contract for a period of time or that any contract that exceeds X a number of dollars, we'd need to bring it back. It's not about the contract amounts, it's about advertising every time. So when we have a contract amount, if that amount exceeds a procurement level per the state or the city's procurement policy, then we would still bring those contracts back to council as we normally would. We just wouldn't have to RFQ for the geotechnical firm every time.
Okay, so if we do select the firm tonight, then we enter into the actual contract negotiation and then that's brought back. Is that brought back for approval?
The contract or the project?
The, the contract. Another says, this says authorize city manager to negotiate the contract.
Based on your motion, Mayor, you could do either action. You could take the action as we do on, on most and say, authorize city manager to negotiate and authorize the contract or execute the contract. Or you could say have the manager negotiate the contract and then bring it back for review. However you word it, that's how we'll make it happen.
All right. Questions, comments from council? Yes, Dick.
Mr. Mayor, how much do we have budgeted for geothermal?
Geotechnical?
Good news is, none for the thermal, but we do have. I flipped through earlier, Mayor. I was looking at FY21. I believe in total, just looking at 21, I, I think the number is, I think it's 90,000 and that's across multiple projects.
Yeah, so Dick, there's, there's not one specific line item that says geotechnical services because each, each project may or may not have the requirement. So it's, it's scattered over all the different projects and stuff. So there's not one single line item. Yes, Dick.
This would be a question for Mr. Ray. Would it be inappropriate to make a motion to establish a contract with this group not to exceed the 90,000 that's in the budget?
Yeah, Mayor, yeah, I think it's, I think for the safeguard, if the council likes the ability to, to limit either the length of time that we have the contract or the amount of money that would go to one individual contractor. I think those are both, I think those are both appropriate because council can say this is how we, this is how we want to handle it.
So typically, we know that there, you know, it's stated in here that it's typically a two-year contract with the ability to extend it. If we wanted, you know, it's up to us whether we want to go with that traditional typical two years or not. That's up to us how we do the motion. And then if we want to set a not to exceed, that's on us. You know, I don't know, you know, if we go off of, you know, what, what he's able to pull out just in the last few minutes, if that 90,000 actually covers all the projects we got out there that would require it or not. But yeah, I don't see a problem with setting a not to exceed amount.
Mayor, the, the basis for the projects, it looks like for next year are it's going to be your water treatment plant and then you're going to have street projects. So whenever we have street reconstruction projects, we have, we need to have some geotechnical services. And then for asphalt testing, they also do geotechnical. That's one thing that we do. And then looking at the foundation. So there's two items that typically come to mind. And then if you look at the previous contracts that we've had, the geotechnical states 1% of the project. So it's 1% of that cost. And that's just an industry standard that they're going to put into their contracts based on the project.
And for me, you know, I would like to, what I would recommend is that the contract be brought back to us. I don't know if I want to set a not to exceed amount right now. I would kind of like to see what the contract, you know, I don't want to leave it necessarily open-ended, but I don't want to set something that if Josh goes into negotiations and they're like, yeah, there's no way based on the number of projects you have out there that we could meet that. And then he would have to bring it back. You know, would have to bring this up again. So you know, I definitely don't want to leave it open-ended, but I don't, I don't know at what amount we would set it to not exceed for right now. Yes, Tim.
Can we, can we authorize him to negotiate? Period? And then bring back to council a proposal?
Yes.
I mean, without any limits, if these guys say, look, you know, like you said, if here's all the work we're going to do and we're going to be on this for two years, we live in Leander, you know, we can do it, we'll be on retainer for this much money. And we'll go, okay, let me go talk to the boss.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's what I, that's the way I would like to see it done. Because I don't want to limit ourselves right off the bat, you know?
I agree.
And then, you know, it may be that, looking at the projects, that the 90,000 or 100,000 may be sufficient, but.
It looks like on the, on the street projects, Mayor, I estimate right at 28,000. And that's based off of the standard, the estimates that we have. So that's the street projects. So again, going back at that 90, I agree. But I do like that process of being able to go and negotiate and then bring that back to council, Mayor. We just, we can't negotiate based on our process without council selecting the firm.
Right, and something else, you know, if we do a multi-year contract, you know, 90,000 might be sufficient for year one, but we may have different types of projects that require more geotechnical in year number two. And maybe they need 125 for that second year. You know, so I don't, I don't, I don't know what ceiling to actually set. I would rather negotiate and then bring back something. And then we can either say yea or nay on, on that amount.
I feel comfortable with that.
Yes, Dick.
All I would like is that we set it up so that as long as it's under the budget, what we have budgeted, that the city staff can go ahead with it and get it done. But if it starts exceeding what we have in budget, then it needs to be brought back to us.
Now you can do it that way as well. You're always going to have mission creep.
Well, and as long as that mission creep is not excessive, I'm just fine with it. But if it starts becoming more, I want it, I want it to come back to us so we can look at it. It may end up being that we need to resubmit it at a later date and look at somebody else, but I just want to, I'm on a point where if we get there, it comes back to us so we can look at it again.
Okay, yeah. Anybody else? All right, anybody, let's see. I do have somebody that has actually signed up for. All right, so Diane. TJP, you have signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
All right, you have the floor.
Well, when I signed up, I signed up on the basis of how number eight was written. And that concerned me because the way it was written, it, it, its phrase be is giving over the, let me think, selecting an engineering consult for geotechnical engineering testing and inspection services for the city of Lago Vista and authorize the city manager as singular to negotiate and execute a contract's price, price, scope of work, and any contract amendments or extension. So the way it was phrased concerned me, given other things historically and, and things in general, that this, it appeared to be no oversight with the city council. So, but as I've listened to the discussion, that was also a concern of council members and Josh himself as well. So that was my, my main concern is will not just the selection of, there's been evaluation that seems already, the selection of this particular firm as the one to go forward with negotiations, contract negotiations is what I'm hearing is going to be approved tonight. And then, so my question was, is was there going to be any accommodations for oversight as to rules, boundaries, limitations, concerns about the extent of the contract and so before by the council, not just one person. Because in, in contract negotiations, it's, it's usually good when the other side knows they're not looking at one person as the responsible per, responsible entity. It's, it's important that the other side knows there is oversight that helps keep things fair and square. So that was my concern with the way that paragraph was written. I mean, that's what brought up. Subsequent to the, the conversations right now, I have questions with regard to the entity. If it is, if my understanding is that we're, there's, they've been researched done and ferreted out and this is a, an entity we want to go forward with as a city. Are we going to pay them a retainer or per project basis, i.e. the 1% that was set as industry standard? I don't know what industry standard is right now, per project as an industry standard or both. And is because contracts coming, the, the aspect of coming back to the council only after it goes over the budget, that is, in my experience, that's not really a good way to go because contracts should be firmed up beforehand. And so there's rules, boundaries, and limitations from the start. And so that's my feeling on that aspect. But the essence is, is I feel strongly that how the general contract is written with potentially subcontracts, that needs to go back before the council and firmed up and then approved with oversight.
Right, thank you. Anybody else? Ron?
Okay, y'all just spent several months doing this budget. And it doesn't appear that you have very much geotech in your CIP. I think Josh said there might be, you know, ninety some odd thousand dollars. How come, how come that's not already franked into the CIP already?
Mayor, for me, those numbers are in. So the, what I was trying to say earlier is it's not about the, it's not about the dollar figure, it's about advertising and getting the RFQs in now. So we don't do an RFQ for the geotechnical for every single project. So it's just for the firm, it's not the dollars. The dollars are already budgeted.
Yeah, it's just not, it's just not, in the budget, it's broken down under all the projects. It's not just one single line item that says geotechnical. So.
The one thing that was missing when I read the packet is I was expecting to see a listing of all the projects that had geotech required and the dollars and you add them all up. And you can either timeframe it if you want or put in a two-year time bucket. But I, I did not see any reference to projects when I went through the data package. I had to go to the CIP and, and look through all the details to pick the fly out of the pepper. I would have thought that would have been included in the RFQ or RFP.
Yeah. I understand that, but I didn't, that's why I was talking about bringing the contract back. Because I know we're, we're considering the, the company right now, the, the firm. But part of the contract negotiation to me is when we would outline. Excuse me, Paul. So that's, that, when we go to the contract, the, and the, and the amount that's in the contract, that's where, to me, that's when we should present, you know, the breakdown of all our projects and, and how much we have estimated for these geotechnical services and conce, and see if that contract is fitting for what we have scheduled. I don't, I don't know if that's something, when we're just considering the firm, I don't know if we want to consider the dollar amounts or not right, right now. That's why I was asking for it to be brought back.
Okay. All right, it's just, it's just, it sounds like, it sounds like you're giving a blank check.
I know, that's, that's the way I kind of understood it myself. And that's why I wanted the contract. You know, I'll, you know, I have no, no problem authorizing the city manager to negotiate the contract. But as far as approval, it, it should come back and everything should be outlined to council and, you know, the audience to, okay, this is what, these are the projects we're looking at. Based on this, this is the estimated cost for geotechnical services. And consider it at that point.
Okay, it's just, then you take the. Okay, it's just, then you take the geotech line of all the details and you summarize it into your RFP, RFQ and, and itemize it and then you know what year it's going to be done and how much is going to be done. I'm just saying, I, I thought it would have been in the data packet, but it's, it's really in the details of the CIP.
Well, it's, you know, right now it's a request for qualifications.
Okay, all right, I see where you're going.
We're just, we're just trying to find that, that right firm and then, and then we consider the, the actual contract.
Okay.
Before we brought in a city engineer for the city, this is exactly how the Walker Partners contract was. So Walker Partners had their contract and it listed out a rate that they would charge us for geotechnical services. It also listed out a design. So with Gary Graham on board as the point person, they would charge us based off that. So this would just be the first time we're bringing it back since we've had an engineer in staff.
Yes, Frank.
Josh. I don't ever recall seeing a geotech contract go to the council and I assume that's principally because if the council or if the staff needs geotech and it's less than forty and it probably will be, the staff will do the deal with the geotech, correct?
That's correct. So typically these contracts will come under professional services if they're not in the contract, the CIP budget.
Yeah, or you'll have a big deal like, like the sewer treatment plant in the, in the company that the city hires may or may not have geotech and they will hire the geotech if they're not part of the company.
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, that happens a lot of times. So in the, you know, when we talk about, if we look at City Hall, for example, one of the things that the contractor would be responsible for is all their geotechnical services, which would be not only the dirt work, but it would be the compaction for the foundation and anything else that would go along with those facilities. Typically speaking, if you roll that into their contract, then that contract with the builder, the contractor, whomever that may be, would line item that out. Council will review that as a whole. So that is correct, Mayor.
Yes, Diane.
Um, I'm just getting a little bit confused here because I think I've heard mentioned a couple of different times by Josh that this, this, it, this, this discussion is more about that we're trying to alleviate the need to advertise for a geotech company for each and every job. So we're, we're talking about, so I'm saying, I, I'm taking that, that this whole, this process tonight is to pave the way so that we can have a geotech service that, that has been ferreted. I mean, everything has been checked and cross-checked and there, this is the one that we're, we've agreed to go forward with under retainer, if you, if you will, for lack of a better phrase at the moment. And so if that's all this is right now, and it's not as per that paragraph state in the agenda, then that's a different approval process than talking about the contract because we've already said that the contract is going to be a little bit more in, entailed process. So tonight, are we indeed, we, we, meaning you guys, are, are we indeed discussing? Yes, it's okay because it, it's okay to have, we've agreed on this particular firm and that we're going to have them, we're going to be under their umbrella for the next two years minimum. And that way we won't have to go out and get a geotech term for each and every project. I agree with that one hundred percent. It was the aspect of the rest of that paragraph, putting all that power in one person's hand for, I don't want to read it all again, for, and not having any council oversight with regard to the, the monies and the context of, of the contract. The contract itself is very important.
Right. So just a clarification. When these are, when these are, are brought forward, because Josh is the CEO, when they're, when they're written and presented, it is written to authorize the city manager to negotiate, execute the contract price, scope, any contract amendments. That's the way it is written, but it's up to us as council to look at that and say whether we agree with that or not. The motion could be to go ahead with way it's, that paragraph is written, but we can definitely make changes to any of that paragraph that we want to provide additional oversight. And so that's why I was, from the very beginning was saying, I would like to see the contract come back to council. You know, for approval. So, but that would, that would take whoever makes the motion, it would take that person, they would have to clarify that in their motion that, you know, we're, we're authorizing the city manager to do this, but we're also requiring that the contract, whatever, is brought back for consideration. So yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
So
Benefit of discussion.
Yeah. Yes, Frank.
It's a question for Josh. And I, I understand this request for professional services. Frankly, the only issue I've got has to do with what it costs and, and the term that Tim used earlier, which was mission creep. Have you all evaluated the various firms based on price? And I understand it's a professional services deal, but you can, you're not supposed to do that, but you can get some indicator.
Mayor, when they do their submissions.
Here's, here's the other question, I guess, the larger question. How, how is it, will this save us money?
So two answers.
Not doing at least some bidding.
Yep, Mayor, so I think there's two answers there. The first thing is when you're looking at their, at their qualifications, typically firms will submit their fee schedules. And so that's a value add for us that you can look at that. When I said earlier, the, the comment is across the board, the standard, the industry standard is one percent of the total project. Well, that's the feedback that we have from the, from the proposals or the qualifications. The second answer, Mayor, for back to Council Robbins, I won't say that it will directly save the city money, but one thing it will do is it will provide us the opportunity to have the advertisement, bring in the firm's qualifications and then to streamline processes. So it, as Counselor Collins had said, if you're able to move the processes forward and the construction projects forward, it has a backend opportunity to save you because then if the contract, the project contract is not elevated, then the one percent's not elevated. So not directly, we expect that the, that the geotech would be a standardized number based on whichever firm we choose, but the backend savings could be there. It's more of a time than a dollar.
Anyone else? All right. Well, if that's all the questions or comments, at this time, it's open for possible action.
Mr. Mayor. Yes. I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion regarding the selection of an engineering consultant for geotechnical engineering testing and inspection services for the city of Lago Vista and authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract, price, scope of work and any other contract amendments and extensions and bring said discussion back to council for further discussion. I left out execute.
All right. So I have the motion to authorit, you know, to approve. I think you have to name this firm in your motion.
Well, it's, it's not named in the, you want me to name it? I, I mean, I can name it. It's not a problem. Where, okay, it's not named.
TS. The second, the second paragraph.
Okay. Then I withdraw that motion. I will make another motion regarding action, acts, action regarding selecting an engineering consultant. PSIT Engineering and Consultant, Consulting for Testing and Inspection Services of this, for the city of Lago Vista and authorize the city manager to negotiate a contract, price, scope of work and any contract amendments or extensions and bring said discussion back to council.
All right, I have a motion. I'm sorry, did I cut? Dick, was that a second? I think I cut you off twice.
Yes, I second.
Okay, sorry about that. So yes, I have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? All right. The contract has, or the selection has been approved and the city manager has been authorized to negotiate a contract, price, scope of work, amendments, extensions and bring that back to council for approval. All right, we shall go to number nine. Discussion, consideration and possible action, can excuse me, regarding the purchase of real property from Preston Jackman for our property located at two zero six zero five Dawn Drive. Just like last meeting, we have not heard from Mr. Jackman. So I am going to make a motion that we postpone this agenda item until we hear from Mr. Jackman.
I'll second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Questions, comments? Any further discussion, I should say? All right. Whoop. All right, let me back up. Let me withdraw. Let me withdraw my motion real quick. Sorry. I withdraw my, my motion.
Withdraw my second.
All right, Dorsey, you had, I'm sorry, got ahead of myself.
I'm sorry, and I know I was rude last time, but um, how many times has this been brought up on the agenda? Is this the third time and this guy hasn't showed up? I'm sorry, is it the third time this has been up on the agenda and this person still is not ready to listen to what the city council has to say? I mean, I don't understand. How, what? No vote or just kick him back out again?
Yes, it, it was, this is the third time it was on here, but we, we kept putting it on here because we didn't, if he made a, if he did make an offer, we didn't want to have it not on the agenda. You know, we wanted to be able to consider it if he did make us an offer. So we have left it. We've continued to put it on there and I don't know, we'll discuss whether we want to put it on the agenda again or not, or if we're just going to wait. So yes, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for some additional information, we're in active discussions with this gentleman. He was trying to get an appraisal. When I checked in with him earlier in the week, he had indicated he was supposed to get the appraisal back on Tuesday and then he didn't respond when I asked him about it. So we thought we were close and thought it might be decent to have it on the agenda, but we're actively working with the gentleman and trying to acquire the property. It's us trying to acquire a property from him, not the other way around. Just FYI.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's not like it's just, just sitting out there. It's, it, there is activity going on and we just didn't want to have it not be on the agenda. So we'll see for next month. Yes, Darcy.
This is the property right out on Dawn Drive across from the Veterans Memorial, correct?
No.
No, no, this isn't, um. Okay, so I thought this one's been on there three, two. Okay, thank you.
It is on Dawn Drive, but it is not that corner lot. All right, anybody else? All right, so I will restate my motion. I make a motion that we postpone this agenda item until we hear from Mr. Jackman.
And I second the motion again.
All right, so I have my motion and second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
Aye.
Right, hearing no objections, it is postponed, postponed until we hear from Mr. Jackman. All right, we move into consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are to be considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have number ten, approval of the following council meeting minutes. August twentieth, twenty twenty, regular meeting minutes, September third, twenty twenty, special call meeting minutes and September third, twenty twenty, regular meeting minutes. Questions, comments from council? All right. Anybody from the audience have any questions, comments on the minutes under consideration? All right, at this time I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
All right, I have a motion and a second by Mr. Collins. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved unanimous. All right, so now we go into number eleven, which is the Lago Vista Economic Recovery Program. As I have presented in the past, we have two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in coronavirus relief funds. That was our portion from the aid portion of the funds allotted to us by Travis County. We've come up with a grant program to stimulate economic recovery, two parts, the application process for residents and for businesses located within the city limits. Eligible residents will receive gift certificates, which we have named Lago Bucks, to spend at eligible businesses. A list of participating businesses will be provided to eligible residents. Participating businesses can redeem the gift certificates here at City Hall. And they'll be handled similar to way monies handled, but they're only accepted in Lago Vista by participating eligible businesses. And they are, you know, gifts or gift certificates. They will be handled similarly. You know, as a gift certificate or gift card would be, the businesses are encouraged if, if the applicant does not spend the entire fifty dollars at that time, which the denominations of the gift certificates are fifty dollars. If they do not spend fifty dollars, the businesses are encouraged to give the remaining balance to the customer via a store, a, an actual store gift card or gift certificate. We are starting, we have already taken in applications. We have twenty, the last count I had, I think was twenty-three residential applications. And we will be starting the dispersment of the gift certificates tomorrow. We will be here at City Hall from noon to four tomorrow and we will be here on Saturday from noon to four to distribute the gift certificates. And we'll be providing the list of eligible or participa- And we'll be providing the list of eligible or participating businesses. We will be, this is round one. We will be doing additional rounds, but we, uh, because of the timeframe with county approving it and, and getting back to us on what businesses were eligible. You know, we, we wanted to get something started really fast, so we, for round one, we, we hit, we set a short, um, timeframe, just to, so we could get something started and let everybody know, get it out in the community, let it be seen. Let everybody know about this program, this grant program for our businesses. So this is just round one. Uh, we'll be, uh, distributing, uh, four gift certificates. They have a value of, uh, total value of $200 per applicant. And they will be able to use them at participating businesses. Right now, we only have four participating businesses. Uh, we still are in contact with dozens more, and hopefully they will come online as time progresses. But at the moment, we only have four. Uh, those include, uh, Brock's Italian Market and Cafe, The Grill at Highland Lakes, uh, Lifelong Friends Pet Adoptions, and Hill Country Mobile Notary. So the way it is right now, the, you know, we only have select businesses there due to, to benefit highly from this grant program, uh, so we are encouraging as many businesses as possible to get in on this so that, you know, that everybody can take care, take advantage of this grant program. And, uh, you know, residents as well, we're encouraging everybody, you know, to get, get an application in, uh, so that we can get this money out there and get it into the hands of our, into the hands of our businesses. If, if you haven't submitted an application for this first round, you can still do that while we're on site tomorrow and Saturday, and then, um, going in, starting next week, we'll announce, uh, round two. So that's where we're at right now with the, uh, Economic Recovery Program. Let's see, I think that is it. I don't think I've left anything out. Questions, comments from council? Okay, anybody from the audience have any questions or comments? Yes, Diane?
Um, just a clarification, do I understand what you just said about anybody who has application on Friday and Saturday, they can submit their application? Do I understand that to be you're extending the September 30th deadline to include Friday and Saturday?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yes. Yes, I'm trying to get as much out there as possible, so, you know, uh, we're going to be on site, but we're going to be on site, so I don't see any, I'm sorry, go ahead, Diane.
I just want to make sure we're talking about our local businesses. It's in, I mean, this is in support of our local businesses.
Yes, they have to be doing business within the city limits of Lago Vista. That was one of the parameters of the, uh, when county, uh, allocated this money for us. It's for, strictly for, um, expenses inside city of Lago Vista. So you can't take it to, if gnarly, gnarly gar cannot come in and sign up and, and take advantage.
Or just any, I mean, there's lots of business people in the community, but we're talking about businesses that are a business within the community that's generating business within the community.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, and because, you know, because we're, uh, on site tomorrow and Saturday, you know, it just makes sense that we should take applications. If somebody showed up and had not applied, maybe they are watching tonight or they'll hear about this and they're like, oh, okay, well, I have a chance to get $200 that I can spend at participating businesses, now I'm going to go and apply, so. You know, yeah.
I think that's a great accommodation, because I think a lot of our little businesses around here have not actually been in tune to what was going to become potential.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, you know, it, it does have some criteria to it, you know, that, uh, because we were required to put a needs basis on there, but basically anybody, you know, when they came out with that initial list of essential businesses, um, essential workers and stuff, any business that was required to shut down, even if it was only for one day, you know, that makes them, makes them eligible. So, I don't see where, most of our businesses, um, you know, should be, should be eligible to participate in this, so we're trying to encourage them to do so, um, because 240,000 plus dollars to put into our local economy is a, is a nice, um, nice boost, and I, I would, I would hate to see us not take advantage of that, you know, so.
One, one more. Would there be, will there be a time lag? If they were to submit it on Friday or Saturday, would there be a time lag for the approval process?
No. No, long as they meet the, what the requirements on the application. Yeah. Yes, Paul, Paul Print.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I just want to clarify, if I, if I heard you right, there are 23 individuals that have applied, which, who will get $200 each, that, that equates to $4,600 out of this $243,000. And I didn't hear you list any of the major businesses in town, Lowe's, Dollar General, Sun Hardware, Ace Hardware, where probably our citizens spent 95% of their dollars. Uh, so, did, did I get that right? I mean, it just seems like, th- if this is a, you know, a marathon, we're barely out of the gates here, so.
Yes.
I don't know where to go with it, but, but, you know, an extension of two days is not going to make an appreciable difference. You said there's another phase, maybe you can describe what you have in mind for a phase two?
Yes, so, actually, I just got word, we're up to 24 applications. So, yes, we're right, right now, we're looking at, uh, $4,800, uh, that we can inject into the economy. Um, yeah, that leaves us quite a bit. Uh, we're, some of your major businesses that you mentioned, um, we're having problems, I don't want to say it's a problem, um, but because they, they're corporate. There's some other factors in there that they have chosen not to participate. So getting some of the corporate businesses like Lowe's and Ace Hardware and Sonic, um, you know, they're, they're just not, they're not participating, so the, this is definitely would benefit more of our locally owned mom and pop type places, uh, if they will take advantage of it. So, and, and it's really, as you know, getting the word out just seems to be, in, in a small community like this, seems to be extremely difficult. I mean, we've even gone door to door to, you know, to try and drum up, you know, participants, but we're missing a lot of the other small businesses that people use that maybe not necessarily have a brick and mortar storefront, you know, and they're eligible as well if they, um, you know, a lawn care service type business, or if they were required to shut down or anything, they're eligible. Um, but just getting, getting the word out, so that's why we kind of kind of cut this first round short to see, you know, once we get it out there and people see that it's out there in the community, round two will get quite a few more applicants and and businesses participating. You know, you look at, if you take an additional, well, if you did 24, 240,000 and divided it by $200, you know, you're looking at what? 1,200 households? You know? 1,200 households that I could distribute money to, and so far I've got 24. So, yeah. We'd really, we'd, we'd really like for people to sign up. So help spread the word if you can.
Uh, if I may make one more comment.
Yes.
Have, have you considered, so, so if we think about, there's kind of two pieces, as you've described it, the, the benefit to citizens and then the benefit to businesses. If we think about, you know, we've got a big chunk of money here that we can deal with, uh, have you considered maybe something like, uh, letting citizens use some of this money to pay for their water bill, for example? You know, we've got some of our citizens that improve their financial shape and have them in their water bills. Now, that doesn't help local businesses, but it could help local citizens.
Yes, so, um, unfortunately, the county has their own health and human services program, and we were not allowed to issue it to residents for rental, uh, to cover any kind of rent or anything like that, and we were not allowed to, um, issue certificates that they could use for, um, water utility bills, because as a city government, we're not allowed to do any, cover, um, lost income. So since their u-, water utility bill comes straight to the city, they couldn't use it for that. You know, P E C is not a local business, so that wasn't something they could use. They have to, for that rental and utility assistance, they have to go through the county. Yeah, I tried, I, I really tried, um, and we couldn't duplicate, so any, we had four businesses that have been approved for funding through, um, a Travis County TCX, TX, TCTX Thrive Program. Four businesses received funding from that, so they're not eligible for this program. And right now, um, the nonprofits are not eligible. They're not a, I, I don't know, they're not a recognized business, um, but Travis County, and I have directed our nonprofits to Travis County, because as of Tuesday, they have launched TCTX Serve, which is supposed to pro- provide funding for our nonprofits. So you know, it's it's, it's, it's been a tough, a tough battle trying to get the county to approve a program, and this is what I was able to get approved, and so I'm pushing it so I can inject as much money into the community as possible. Paul Roberts?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, um, I recall, I, I remember when this originally showed up on the agenda, and, um, the city, you know, over the course of several meetings, you made it clear that you were trying to find a way to get Travis County to approve a way for you to spend, for, for Lago Vista to spend this money, and they rejected several ideas, al- alternative ideas that might have been better, quite frankly, but they rejected them, because I think you said they were already being used and you had to come up with something different. So I applaud your effort to come up with something and be creative, and I'm, I'm glad that, I, my only regret is that more citizens and businesses didn't sign up for this.
Yeah, and I know it was a short turnaround, um, for this first round. So hopefully this will, you know, open, it'll open everybody's eyes and they'll apply, so, you know. It's there, we.
Mr. Josh Ray is our, is our chief, city's chief marketing officer, and, uh, he's really good on, on, uh, with the, the city manager stuff on Facebook. I think, you know, more, the more you guys make this visible, the better.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, I don't know, we've got it on the city website and all the Facebook pages, I've shared it next door, everywhere, so I don't know what the reluctance is.
I recall Diane saying something about it too, at one point. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. We will move on to number 12, city manager reports. This is the first meeting of the month, so do you have any?
I would like to give you a couple of reports, Mayor. Um, we have, we are wrapping up the paving projects that have been going on around the city, so just want to let people know that, wrapping up the FY 20 projects, and then we're going to start, uh, here in the next week on our FY 21 project. So, part of the, the $2.3 million last year and the $2.8 million this year going into projects, uh, we're going to get those going now. Um, next Wednesday, we'll start working on, um, Fairgut Cove, and then we are, we do have, on Monday, we have a planned water interruption on Patton Avenue. So just anybody in that area, this is a planned, uh, interruption, so we will be working on that area on Monday. And then, one last comment, uh, we have started utilizing the online utility bill alert system, so individuals that want to sign up to, uh, remind them of their utility bill, and then maybe don't, don't want to receive the paper version anymore, they can do that online, uh, by signing up for online access. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Yeah, I know every time I try to go out to my, out to the farm to feed my cows, during the day, I'm having to sit in line to get around the construction going on Lowman Ford Road, so, yeah. All right, anybody else? Well, that was city manager reports. All right, so that brings me to, uh, future meetings, number 13, consider schedule and items for future council meetings. I bring this to your attention again.
Are we out of here before 11?
We are. So that's that's bus stop, um, from the Hollies, and the reason I put that on there is because, next council meeting or as soon as possible, uh, I want, uh, Cap Metro put on the schedule, for, as a discussion. I have several things that I need to bring forward to, uh, council, just, just to present and discuss. No action, just discussion. Anybody else?
Mayor, we will bring the, uh, fee schedule, as, as, as we planned, we'd bring the fee schedule, uh, in October to the council, so we'll have that wrapped up and ready for council review at the next meeting.
All right. Anybody else have anything? No, all right, well, if that is everything, then I will call this meeting adjourned at 10:14 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.